Evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Put your mic on.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act VR 1975, this zoning board meeting of April 4th is called to order. Advocate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, it's on.
It is on.
Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Please call the roll.
Shara Bethia?
Yeah.
Richard Prokranik?
Here.
Joel Reese and Faraz Karan as to be excused this evening. Alan Rich?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd?
Here.
Massim Verdas?
Here.
Michael Doherty?
Here.
Kunal Lakir?
Here.
Chairman Thomas?
Here.
Minutes of the regular meeting, February 15th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
I'll vote second.
Who's second, Alan?
I do.
Oh, Shara, sorry. Shara Bethia?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Massim Verdas?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution David Morenski, CPA 24003. We need a motion.
I'll vote on second. Shara Bethia, yes. Richard Prokranik?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Massim Verdas?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Okay, we have no discussion. We have one hearing. Levin Properties LP ZBA 24001 preliminary and final major site plan with C and D variances in which the applicant proposes to construct a four-story apartment building at 940 Eastern Avenue, Somerset Block 385, Lot 2.07, in the ZB GB zone. And we have everybody here, you're ready?
We're all ready, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to establish a few ground rules before we start. How many witnesses do you expect to call?
We have a total of eight.
That's total, obviously. And I would probably say right away, we probably won't get through all eight, but we'll see how it goes. That brings me to one other issue is we have a 10 o'clock time limit. We finish testimony and questioning of whatever witness is being questioned at that time, and then we adjourn. We start no new testimony after 10:00. Just so everybody understands how this works, because it's different if you've had experience in front of the planning board. The applicant will present a witness who will give testimony. The board will question that witness at the end of his or her testimony. Then we will open to the public, and members of the public are free, if they wish, to question that witness, but only based on the testimony that's given by the witness or a question concerning something involving that witness's expertise. You don't ask the traffic expert an architectural question, all right? We don't normally set a time limit for this. Your questions have to be questions, not statements, and they have to be relevant to the expert and the testimony that you just heard. After that, we close to the public. Applicant calls the next witness, and we repeat the process all the way through. After the final witness, we'll have another opening to the public, and you will be able at that time to give your statement, comment, opinion, if you will. We'll deal with that a little bit more in detail later. That is the only place where we may see fit to establish time limits. Judging by this crowd, we probably will have a five-minute time limit. I'll ask before we start, how many people think they expect to speak? If it's a few, I don't know whether there's a magic number, then we won't have a time limit. If it's 50 people, we'll have a time limit. When you get your chance to question witnesses, if someone has gone before you and they've asked your questions, don't ask the same questions again. Don't make the same comments over and over again. The board is very good at paying attention. They don't need to hear the answer to the same question four or five times. That's all we ask. That way, everyone will get a chance, it'll move efficiently, and we'll get through it. That being said, any questions? You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Wasnesky, Law Firm of Wasnesky and Associates, representing the applicant this evening. This is an application for C and D variances, as was indicated, as well as a site plan for preliminary and final approval. Real briefly, this is a process that's been ongoing for five years. My client first met with municipal professionals in 2019. We initially filed an application with the zoning board. We withdrew that application. We did an informal presentation in front of the planning board. The other night, we were back here in front of the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission, and now we're back here on this application. I'm not going to do a lot of preliminaries. I'd like to get right into the testimony. The first person, before we do that, however, I'd like to ask counsel, has the board accepted jurisdiction based upon the affidavit of service that we've submitted with the certified mail proofs and the affidavit of publication from the newspaper? Yes. Okay, thank you very much. I'd first like to call Sidney Singer. He is the Vice President of Levin Management in charge of leasing. Mr. Singer, if you'd come up, I believe they're going to want to swear you in. Mr. Singer, if you could raise your right hand, please. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please restate your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Sidney Singer, S-I-N-G-E-R.
Okay, Mr. Wasnesky, your witness. Mr. Singer, I believe that you may sit if you'd like, if it's okay with the board.
That's fine.
You have an opening that you would like to present to give the background as to why Levin is here tonight, seeking this application and this approval.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everybody. Sid Singer, Levin Management, thank you again. I'd like to share with you some background information today about Rutgers Plaza. Rutgers Plaza Shopping Center was developed and built in early 1970s by Levin Properties, and it originally included a WT Grand Store, a General Cinema movie theater, a supermarket, and a number of smaller shops offering retail products and services in suburban Franklin Township. Over the years, Kmart assumed the WT Grand Store, and after General Cinema closed their theater, the center underwent a degree development and renovation in 2001 through 2025, which included demolition of the theater building and construction of a new freestanding 74,000 square foot Stop &amp; Shop supermarket and a Chase Bank pad. In early 2018, Levin was concerned about the future of the nearly 100,000 square foot Kmart store based on reported sales performance of the Rutgers Plaza store and the eventual bankruptcy of a filing of Sears, the parent of Kmart. Levin's leasing team began marketing this space to potential Big Box anchor stores as well as smaller junior anchors prior to Kmart's eventual closing and lease rejection and bankruptcy. I assumed the leasing responsibilities for Rutgers Plaza in April of 2018, when I joined Levin Management Corporation. After my promotion to VP of Leasing, I reassigned that property, and I continue to oversee the leasing efforts for the center today. Our team, consisting of six full-time agents, focus on retailer expansion, relocation, and of course, retention. Our leasing team is very active in the New Jersey retail leasing market. Levin Management recorded a record-breaking 1 million square feet of leasing transactions in 2021, followed by another record-breaking year in 2022 of 1.2 million square feet of leasing. 2023 exceeded 1 billion square feet as well. Our team continues to market the former Kmart box and adjacent space to potential anchors and junior anchors, ranging from 20,000 square feet to 80,000 square feet. Backfilling spaces like these former Kmart boxes have many components, such as the current post-pandemic economy and the e-commerce economy. Now more than ever, retailers rely mainly on analytics and no longer go with their gut fillings as the likely success of a potential new location. Frankly, our belief, nor Franklin Township's belief, doesn't matter. If the analytics do not check the boxes, retailers simply will move on to locations that do. We continually revisit with all these potential anchor and junior anchors that are in the New Jersey retail market areas. It should be noted that we are currently negotiating leases that will result in demising the vacant office depot space, allowing for two tenant occupancy, each at about 10,000 square feet, centered around the entertainment category. The feedback our leasing team has received and continues to receive cites several issues with Rutgers Plaza. First and foremost, and first and most important, is that the Eastern Avenue retail corridor is viewed as a secondary retail market sandwiched between the stronger retail trade areas such as Bridgewater, East Brunswick, and North Brunswick, and to a lesser extent, Piscataway. All of the potential anchors and junior anchor tenants do extensive market analysis, including cannibalization studies, which is the impact of adding new stores and what that will have on existing stores within the market. Since COVID, these tenants have been more selective concerning expansion. All of these competing trade areas are within a 15- to 20-minute drive time of Rutgers Plaza. Most of the potential replacement anchor tenants, as well as junior anchors, already have stores located in these established nearby trade areas, where there is a critical mass of other retailers. Despite Levin's efforts since 2018, we have just not found any demand for this location to date for replacement anchors or junior anchors. Secondly, the existing Kmart box is obsolete. It is roughly 350 feet wide by 350 feet deep and has a clear ceiling height of about 16 and a half feet. Today's anchor stores will not leave space that is 315 feet deep. The major home centers such as Home Depot and Lowe's require 500 feet of frontage, which we cannot accommodate at Rutgers Plaza. Most anchors and junior anchors would prefer not more than 150 feet of store depth with a clear height of a minimum of not less than 19 feet. We hired an architect to create renderings of new configuration of the Kmart box to reduce the depth of the space as a marketing tool for leasing, and still could not find anchors or junior anchor interest. While our site is significantly challenged by limited visibility from the two adjoining streets, which is very important to retailers, we were also confronted by major changes in the evolving retail tenant world. Pre-COVID, there was already an increasing trend towards e-commerce and less brick-and-mortar retailing of products. COVID accelerated this trend. In 2019, 11% of all retail sales in the U.S. were done through the Internet. In 2022, this figure increased to 14.7%, and again increased in 2023 to 15.4%. This trend has made new site selection for anchor stores much more challenging, and they must more closely evaluate potential sites for new store locations, as previously stated. And while the e-commerce trend shows the need for shopping center owners to find more internet-proof retail tenants like entertainment, personal services, restaurants, these categories do not work for a 100,000-square-foot obsolete building. I should also mention that cinema chains have not been expanding, and big-box retailers such as Target or Walmart have reverted back to their full-size stores of about 150,000 square feet. We remain committed to preserving the retail at Rutgers Plaza, but we must have another anchor to accomplish that. We cannot continue to have a vacant 100,000-square-foot obsolete building that was not leasable. Our existing retailers are committed to Rutgers Plaza, and we are as well. We signed new leases with McDonald's to take the old Burger King building, another new lease with the tax agency, Lianou and Associates, two pending leases mentioned above, and are working with another tenant proposing to take nearly 5,000 square feet, noting they are evaluating two competing locations in the immediate area. Chase Bank, Crunch Fitness, Dollar Tree, Morales Village, and T-Mobile have all extended the leases on a long-term basis, and Venus Jewelry is under construction for their newly expanded store and extended long-term lease. As an agent and VP of Leasing, I am very concerned that without this newly proposed anchor, Rutgers Plaza will be faced with new vacancy that will see the same fate as Kmart had seen for the past four years: dark, vacant, unleasable, without viable anchors to support the retail component. Based on this background, Levin started to explore alternative uses for the former Kmart box about five years ago. We felt it was important to replace the consumer traffic generated by an anchor store with another use that would bring regular foot traffic to the center in order to keep the remaining stores in the center viable. Among the valuable options, office building was not considered due to the very high vacancy rate in the office market surrounding Rutgers Plaza. The office component of retail real estate continues to struggle with no sign of relief. The best use for the empty Kmart box is to consider residential as part of a mixed-use development. The residential component would serve as a second anchor store to Stop &amp; Shop. Stop &amp; Shop remains concerned about the future of the shopping center, and their position hasn't changed. Without a redevelopment of Rutgers Plaza, it's possible Stop &amp; Shop will vacate at the end of their term in 2025. However, with this redevelopment, Shop &amp; Shop will have every reason to extend their lease and remain one of the anchors of Rutgers Plaza. Having a residential component adds more good regular supermarket customers to the center, like a retail anchor, and because of this location of Rutgers Plaza, it is not in high demand amongst replacement anchor stores and junior anchors, as residential component will serve the same purpose. In short, our proposed redevelopment is appropriate transformation of an older struggling retail center to a modern mixed-use development. The current site lends itself to this based on the existing parking fields, which is sometimes a challenge in other mixed-use development, where different uses are competing for the same parking spaces. In Rutgers Plaza, there is a defined and adequate parking field for the residential component, while the retail buildings have defined and adequate parking for their customers. Adding a new anchor as a residential component will revitalize the existing retail space and provide an opportunity for the center to get leased up for the long-term future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Mr. Chairman, that concludes this witness's testimony.
Okay, any board questions? You mentioned anchors several times. I was under the impression an anchor was another store, a bigger store, that would bring customers into smaller stores around the area there.
Yes, so anchors are typically a bigger box generating somewhere between that 80,000 to 100,000, 150,000 square feet, where junior anchors range a little bit more closer to the 20,000 to 50,000 square foot range.
So how does that compare with a residential? How does a residential bring in customers?
Well, people like to live, to dine, eat, and play, if you will, in those areas without having to go to another center or another location. They can just kind of walk over and do what they want to do there on a daily basis.
Any other board questions? We're open to the public.
Actually, I have one. So you mentioned many names that you have tried. Have you considered any indoor sports-related franchises? And, you know, there could be a lot of indoor sports activities that could be built in there, too.
Yeah, we have seen pickleball is an example, is one of those types of sports that you see today. In the office depot space, we're working with kids entertainment and also a fitness-type use that's centered around sports. That's the two tenants that I mentioned that are poised to take over and demise that space next to Crunch Fitness.
I have a question. Who thought of creating a four-story building?
I'm not exactly sure who thought of the retail component for four stories. I would imagine some of the consultants in that regard would have a better idea of...
Who would?
I'm sorry?
You said somebody else would have a better idea?
I would imagine, John.
I think he's saying one of the professionals that will come will probably be able to provide better clarity on that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I focus on the retail component. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, a few questions. So we heard before that this effort is, I think I heard, five years in the making. Have you been trying to lease Kmart in that time, or did your efforts to lease Kmart stop when that, five years ago?
They haven't stopped at all. They continue to work today on the property and on that space.
So the Kmart's space?
Correct.
Okay, so while you've had, obviously, some type of, you know, you had, I guess, a residential developer is going to build the, has the interest in building that, you've continued to try to lease the Kmart space despite that?
That's correct. My team is focused on the retail. That's their job to do. That's my job to do. I don't really have any vested interest, if you will, in the residential component except what's best for the rest of the shopping center.
Could you characterize what's the nature of those efforts?
Well, it's a couple of different things. There's mass marketing, there's email blasts, there's what we call, you know, ground marketing, where you go out and talk to the different tenants. We attend all ICSE, which is the shopping centers, if you will, where all the people get together, retailers, brokers, tenants alike, to talk about expanding, where they're expanding, what they're looking for in their newer trends. So we attend all those conventions.
One of the board members had asked about a non-retail, I mean, he had mentioned a particular example, but did you look at any other non-retail uses for that site?
We have. We looked at things like self-storage that didn't really work out very well because they have certain intricacies that are associated with that, but we've looked at other alternatives, self-storage, as I mentioned, the entertainment side of things, the cinema, again, we looked at. Clearly, COVID had an impact on that as well, and they're not expanding, but we really focus on the retail component.
Okay, what about some type of medical facility? We were right down the street from Robert Wood Johnson in St. Peters. Was there any effort to explore that?
Yes, kind of a different category than we're typically looked at in terms of what we do from a retail component, so it's a little bit different field, but yes, we engage with the same brokerage community that handles office, medical, retail.
Was there any interest in that, in that segment?
Preliminary interest, nothing that I would say to you that would be viable at this point, but preliminary interest.
Okay.
How about as an educational use?
Yeah, we talked to the different schools in the area. We did look at that. Nothing really transformed in that need for them, so, you know, if it was an option for us and it was something that the other party showed interest in, we would explore that, we would offer them any information that's available, that they need, but we haven't gotten any real interest to date.
Okay, any others?
I do have one question. So if you had started this process approximately five years ago and engaged the township, why has township not supported this effort via an overlay district or redevelopment plan?
I'm as confused by that as you are.
Mr. Chairman, if I could jump in. So just to give you a better detail on the history, we first filed an application about four years ago, three and a half years ago. There was a resolution of the governing body opposing that application. At that point in time, we withdrew the application from consideration by the zoning board. We then thought that, well, maybe an alternative process would be to make a presentation to the planning board with the suggestion that a narrowly tailored rezoning of the property could be accomplished. There did not appear to be any receptiveness to that. We made the presentation, but there was no interest expressed by those officials. And so the applicant here has been trying to continue to market it, but also trying to keep other options open because of the length of time that this box has been empty. And so they've been pursuing both in hopes that one of the paths will pan out.
I'll try again now. Is there anyone in the public who would like to ask this witness a question concerning his testimony? Come to the mic. Your name.
Arnold Schmidt, 134 Hickory Road, Somerset. Wasn't planning on asking you any questions until the very end, when you mentioned pickleball. And there are several examples specifically with Kmart's throughout the country that have closed and have been reinvented with pickleball courts. Pickleball is one of the largest growing sports in the country, especially among people 55 years and older. We have a lot of people 55 years and older in this town, and according to the Levin website, there are 10,000 people within one square mile of the Kmart site. So what happened to your investigation into pickleball courts that could also have with it other entertainment aspects for not only pickleball, if there's more room for other things?
Agreed pickleball is growing, and it's a lovely sport, there's no question about that. One of the interesting parts about that is there's opportunities out there other than Rutgers Plaza, other than a Kmart box. That trend, right now, you're starting to see them come into the shopping centers, but there are some challenges with that. The ceiling heights usually are a challenge for them. Column spacing is a challenge for them, so it, and size is a challenge for them because they are not typically 100,000 square foot plus courts. They're typically much smaller than that.
You talked more about other sites, not this site, and this site has a high ceiling. There isn't a problem, from what I can see, as far as pickleball is concerned. So why are you deflecting away from, to talk about other sites and not this site as far as using it for pickleball?
I don't think I was deflecting, and I'm saying some of the challenges that we're having are attracting those pickleball users that find this site more desirable than other sites. That has not been the case so far.
Okay, but you have heavily pursued it.
Oh, most certainly, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kiki Anastasikos. I live in Canal Walk 3204 Enclave Circle in Somerset, and I have been a 20, 25-year resident of Somerset County. So, Mr. Singer, thank you, first of all, for your presentation. You mentioned, my question, one of my questions is, you mentioned your leasing team and how involved they were in pursuing this. And did they do a market study of Franklin Township, like income and how many other, as you call them, anchors? Was there a specific market study that was done pertaining to this particular site?
Most certainly, yes.
Okay, is that study available to the public? Is it documented, and is it something that we can request?
If you go onto the Levin website, our brochure does show a lot of those statistics that you're looking for.
Specifically to the Kmart site?
Specifically to Rutgers Plaza, yes.
Also, you mentioned different anchors that you approached and you marketed and you promoted the site for. Is each one of these documented? Like, if you approached, let's say, Walmart or Target, did you document the meetings that you had, who attended the meetings, what date those meetings took place, and are those available to the public?
They're not available to the public, but they are documented.
They are documented, okay. So how successful would you say that your marketing team is overall in the history of Levin Properties?
Marketing... Marketing team or leasing team? Or both?
Both.
Well, the fact that I did mention in the testimony that 2021 and 2022 were record years for leasing on our team in the 70-year history, so I'd say pretty successful.
Okay, so, if they have been so successful in the past, what makes it so difficult for them to address the current challenges? Because a successful team is not a good team only when the economic conditions are good. A, a good marketing team and a good leasing team should be able to tackle challenges like COVID, e-commerce, et cetera. So, how do you explain the fact that they have been unable and unsuccessful to get either a big or junior anchor?
Well, as I mentioned in the testimony, we're sandwiched between some major markets here, and this site is obsolete. It doesn't fit for those larger anchor stores that I had mentioned. And as far as the junior anchors, they want to be around other co-tenants that are similar. So, unfortunately, when you look at our center in comparison to the major markets around here, they have a satisfactory coverage in those markets. And there's other markets that they would pursue where there are voids. They don't look at this particular set as a void for them.
Okay, thank you. But how would your leasing team or marketing team explain the fact that Franklin Township is the only township? That when you do a Google study, you don't see any major anchors? And what is so unique about Franklin Township that, I mean, you, you can say the same thing for any, any town, that it's sandwiched between other, you know? So, New Brunswick is sandwiched between Piscataway, Edison, and, I don't know, Princeton or whatever. So, what is so unique, according to your marketing team or leasing team, about Franklin? Is Franklin Township cursed to become a retail desert, as I call it?
No, I wouldn't say it would be cursed, but in reality, we don't make the decision for the retailers. They make their decision. We can only present an opportunity to them. They do their market study, they do their own, and they work independently. As much as we may try to convince them of the need, the want, the desire, if it doesn't fit their needs, wants, and desires, they're not going to come here.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, did you present to these anchors any financial incentives? Like lower rent for the first five years? Or, you know, I don't know?
Yeah, getting creative when it comes to offer leasing terms is something that we do on a daily basis with every deal that we look at.
But specifically with financial incentives? Because, and the reason why I'm asking this is because every retailer I know, from my hairdresser to my dry cleaner to whoever, they all complain about the high rents that they have to pay for, you know, the space that they are leasing in any, not yours specifically, but in any given strip mall. So, did you consider?
Most certainly. When you look at anchors or junior anchors, they're typically a lower rent pair because they're the ones that bring the traffic to the center to support the smaller retailers.
Okay, and my last question, thank you. My last question is, in the last five years, how many such conversions has Levin Properties pursued? Meaning from retail to residential? In the state of New Jersey or in other states that you have businesses?
I don't have the answer to that question, unfortunately. Again, my team, we focus on the retail side. I can share with you. We haven't done residential, if that's what you're asking, but you asked.
Yes, I'm asking if this is the first time that you're trying to, to divert your investments from commercial, where you've been so successful, to residential, where it's a new, it's a new thing for you, right?
To my understanding, this would be the first.
The first? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, if the individuals could at least speak so that the court reporter can pick up the name. Sometimes it goes quickly, and she may not be able to hear everything.
Need the last speaker? Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Donna. I'm from 19.
Nice and loud, so that she can hear. And full name, not just your first name.
Donna Summers, 19 Shelley Drive, Somerset, New Jersey.
Excellent.
I'm a little nervous. I've never done this before. I have a couple of questions. How many units were they wanting to build at that Kmart?
I believe it was 200.
So, how many residents are in Somerset? Franklin Township? Does anybody have a number?
About 70,000.
So, what you're saying is the Stop &amp; Shop would feel more comfortable having 200 people that are there living on site than bringing in 70-some thousand Somerset residents?
No, I think they'd be more comfortable than having the vacant box there with no activity.
Have you considered dressing up the property that you're trying to rent? Because in all the years I've lived here, I've never seen one improvement go on in that shopping center. And usually, when you market a property for rent or sale, you beautify it.
Yeah, when you're talking about something in a redevelopment and anchor tenants and junior anchor tenants, they have very specific facade needs, if that's what you're talking about, the facade of the building, the look from the outside, they have very specific needs, and those needs are ever-changing. So, to build something today probably would not fit for that tenant that may come tomorrow.
Right, that's what I'm saying. In, in order to really want to bring in a retail client, there's got to be some effort on the person that owns the strip mall. And I don't see any effort.
Okay, we're starting to move into more statements than questions.
All right, I'll give you another question. Have you tried to take that building and consider redeveloping that area where the Kmart is for smaller shops?
Yeah, if you go on the website, you'll see there's two different components of it. The existing building as Kmart is today, and then a scaled-back version, reducing the depth of that building significantly to, to attract those types of tenants that you're talking about.
So, you would be adding smaller retail spaces there?
They would accommodate, your smaller retails, what would qualify as a junior anchor, that 15 to 25, 30,000 square foot tenant? Yes.
Okay, and that's probably all the questions I have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, loud and clear, name and address.
I understand. Good evening. Nicole Pride, 12 Drake Road, Somerset.
Last name is?
Pride. P-R-I-D as in David, E as in Edward.
Excellent.
I have a couple of questions. One, was there a study done to, to determine the impact on the school district with having additional residential units in the area?
Mr. Chairman, we have a witness who's going to be addressing that later on in the presentation.
Today, tonight.
Well, when we get to him.
Yeah, that question probably is.
I'm sorry, was that a yes or a no?
That's a we don't know. It all depends how far we get.
Got it.
I, I appreciate that you'd like to know, and you'd like it to be tonight, but as you can see, each witness is going to take longer than just their testimony period because people have questions.
Sure, got it. Thank you. The other question I have is, you talked about some of the physical constraints of the building and how it makes it difficult for you to find a, another store to come into the unit. And I think you used Home Depot as an example. So, if you're developing a new construction for a residential unit, that means you're changing ceiling heights, maybe, or you're changing the configuration of the building. So, can you tell me, why can't the buildings be modified to have a new big retailer come to the development?
It's not that the building can't be modified. The footprint can't be expanded beyond what it is. You only have a certain amount of width to offer those bigger boxes that you're talking about. We have 315 feet right now of width of the building. To expand it to 500 feet, that would be needed for those types of tenants that you asked about, would take you into the roadway on JFK.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lincoln Austin Lawrence, 14 Cortland Drive, Somerset, New Jersey. I only had two things. The first, it was kind of a, I hate to say pseudo-threat about ShopRite leaving in 2025, I'm sorry, Stop &amp; Shop. Now, they said that if you don't rent this and make this some type of residential area, they're going to not renew their lease.
Mr. Chairman, they're going to be testifying?
But he could mention it. He brought it up, and he's the one I'm asking about.
What he's saying is that someone from Stop &amp; Shop will come and testify, and I think that that will, will address whatever issues relate to Stop &amp; Shop staying or going.
Even though.
You get it right from the horse's mouth.
But he's kind of the horse here, too, because he's the one who said that they told him that they might not.
Well, he mentioned that.
Or they won't.
He mentioned that this project might be an impetus to them to want to stay beyond their lease.
Okay, the way he worded it sounded as if he was saying they were going to leave unless, is that inaccurate?
That is inaccurate, Mr. Chairman. His words were, it's possible Stop &amp; Shop could vacate at the end of their term in 2025.
And it's just as possible they could not. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to know that part. And as the other person alluded to, with you mentioning the, the sizes of things, and we talked about anchors and junior anchors, are there junior, junior anchors? So, you can make a lot more little stores in that area instead of just one big store or two built, welded up? You can have 10 stores in the same spot. Break it down, rebuild there. Is that an option?
We have some small shop vase, if that's what we refer to it, that's been sitting vacant for some time in the center, so we're not taking that away. That's still there. And that has proven to be challenging because there isn't an anchor tenant bringing the draw that those smaller tenants feed off of.
Haven't had an anchor tenant there since, I don't know when. I can't remember when Kmart left.
Well, you, you have one, the grocery store. That's your one anchor. The secondary anchor is what brings the additional traffic.
I think we've got enough traffic. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Renee McGuinness, 93 Oakland Avenue, Somerset, New Jersey. Hello. Just, I have two quick questions.
Hold the microphone down. There you go.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Just two quick questions. Are planning members or township council members invited to meetings when you are marketing, when you're looking to bring in either big box or, I would say, the smaller ones, the smaller anchor stores? Are they a part of it, of this vision for the township?
From a retail component, no.
Yes, okay. Thank you. My second question is, I know you made a statement that since the pandemic, there's changes, but we know, I don't, I don't know what they refer to as a lower, as the anchor, what size anchor, but we're talking about TJX corporations, TJ Maxx, Marshalls. They're growing 3% each year. They're at 13.3 billion that they, they actually stated in November. So, those type of stores are all over the place and growing. Have you reached out to them and marketed for here?
Yeah, those are the junior anchor category tenants, and we speak with them on a consistent basis.
Okay, so, one last question. A represent, a representative from the township, are they actively pursuing as well, along with you? And I know, I, I know I stated this a little bit different, but I'm saying, is that allowed? Can this be done? Because this is our town, and a voice needs to be heard from the people as well.
Certainly wouldn't be disinvited, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Just for your, for your information, the township has an economic development director that's available to talk to businesses and encourage commercial growth. It would be highly inappropriate for any members of any boards, planning or zoning, to be involved in discussions involving bringing anybody into the township. Okay?
I'm Marilyn Johnson. I live at 144 Drake Road. I have been a resident here for 60 years. I would like to know if there has been a traffic study on Eastern Avenue.
Ma'am, the traffic study is coming later. That's, I'm sorry, it's not appropriate for this witness.
I'm sorry, but doesn't that have?
It'll come later, but it's not.
Doesn't that have a very big impact on your decision?
I agree with you, but it comes with another witness. The questions now are for his testimony, questions that you may have or clarifications.
All right.
He didn't testify about traffic, so you can't really ask him traffic questions. Somebody else is going to come up and speak on that issue. We'll cross-examine him, and you can cross-examine him then.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I think it may help, Mr. Wiznewski, can you inform the, the board and the public who you're going to be presenting and what they're going to be speaking to?
Yes, that would help.
Absolutely. So, we have Mr. Singer, who's the vice president of leasing. Scott Turner, a licensed civil engineer from Menlo Engineering, will be talking about the site plan. We have Carl Penkey, an engineer from Langin, who will be talking about the traffic study that was done. Andrew Mello, an architect of Minnewaska, will be talking about the facades, about the building, about the layout, about the materials. Christopher Otto of the Otto Group will be talking about the market analysis, the, the number of children that will potentially be attracted to the building, how this fits into the economics of the center and the community. We have a representative from Stop &amp; Shop who will testify. We have a, another tenant from within the shopping center who will testify. And then concluding, we will have Paul Phillips, our planner, who will provide the required planning testimony for the variances.
Okay, the short answer here is, your question is fine, but this is the wrong person to ask.
Have you discussed the profitability to Franklin Township for having this?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
How does it benefit Franklin Township to have these apartments put into?
This is something that will probably, more likely, come from the planner, or a couple of the other witnesses, the marketing analysis that you mentioned. This witness is to be questioned on the testimony that he gave and presented. Your questions are fine, just the wrong person.
I, I think the public need to remember, this is kind of like, we've all watched TV shows and movies where there's a court. This gentleman just gave testimony. This is your opportunity, just like the board did and some members of the public, to cross, you know, to, to, to cross-examine the testimony that he provided. So, that's why it's, it's like this. And then there's going to be another expert, and you're going to have an opportunity to cross-examine them on their reports and their, and their testimony. So, please, again, that's, that's why the chairman's trying to get you to concentrate on his testimony, get questions, you know, out that you need about his testimony.
In other words, this is not the final meeting. Is that correct?
Absolutely not. I don't think.
About this issue?
We wouldn't have a chance to ever finish this tonight.
We've heard there's going to be, I think, eight or nine people speaking, and the chairman said he has a deadline of 10 o'clock. So, do the math.
Hello, good evening. My name is Watsal Shah, and I'm living on 11 Summerall Road. I'm not sure whether my question now stays after the chairman clarified a couple of things about testimony, but maybe, I'm not sure if I would put the question here, whether this, is, is it any, any zoning variance being taken here for this site?
I'll just.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, we're here because we're asking for a use variance, we're asking for bulk variances, and we're seeking site plan approval. And so, all of those issues are ultimately the decision of the board based upon the testimony that comes tonight and whatever future meetings this is held at.
Okay, because what I've seen that unless you present your case very strongly and without any public pushback, I don't think, that's my understanding. I'm also civil engineer, so don't think a user, usage variance would be approved. I believe so. So, that's why.
That's, that's a statement that you can make later.
Okay.
And, and we're nowhere near having enough information to make it out there.
Sorry about that, yeah. Sorry about that, yeah, and, uh, okay, yeah, that's it, thank you very much.
Hi, Deborah Zabatsky, 1935 Old Amwell Road, Somerset. My questions are specific. You mentioned several times through your testimony that the current building structure is not conducive to a large anchor or junior anchor tenant. You've also provided that your marketing team has done, uh, a lot of work to try to occupy that space. My question is, has your team, your, your professional development considered improving the space to meet the current economic needs?
This space that we would try to improve would be more tenant-specific for a tenant's interest, these junior boxes that would require changes to that building, yes, we would accommodate for, if they were to have interest, we would certainly accommodate their construction requirements.
Okay, so, um, if a retailer were to approach you and say the, the current size of the space was not conducive, you would give them, um, an incentive to occupy the space? Like, for instance, um, the layout of the building is 15 feet tall for the roof, and it needs to be 19 feet, how is your team addressing that?
Well, then we would raise the roof for that tenant as part of the redevelopment, that's correct. The same way that we would cut the depth of the building that I had mentioned.
Okay, so when you're, so, um, okay, and so has your team done a market analysis or, and how much the cost would be to improve that space to bring in what current retail wants in a space, because your, the current Kmart space is outdated, um, as opposed to asking for a variance for residential retail? Are they making more money as an incentive to bring in resi- rental, or is it, or is it comparative?
Uh, I apologize for the delay, just wanted to make sure I had a chance there.
Absolutely.
The, the cost factor isn't really an issue if we have a tenant or a series of tenants to take over and do something with that building. In the world of retail that we live in, you don't take a building and build it to a particular exterior specification without meeting the needs of the tenant that you're marketing to. We can show renderings and elevations, the tenants are sophisticated enough to understand how that works, they get what is referred to as architectural drawings for the interior and exterior elevations that would show what their prototype would look like in that building. So yes, we have done that.
Okay, is that prototype and those renderings available to the public?
No.
So if, if I were to search and I wanted to open a retail space, I wouldn't be able to see that this Kmart site might be conducive to my needs?
Well, you could, you could, or it's, yeah, I mean, if you're a retailer looking for this, there's a couple of different ways to do that. You can go through the media, uh, doing that, there's different platforms like CoStar, LoopNet that show availability, this property is listed on those properties as well, on those sites as well. Typically, a retailer such as a TJ Maxx that somebody mentioned, has a local brokerage team that handles their expansion, that understands exactly what they're looking for, what their needs are, and knows the market, and they're sophisticated enough to understand that a building of this can be changed, could be modified to fit their needs. If they had interest here, that would not be an issue, because we could fit their needs the way this building is. The problem is, is that the location doesn't fit their needs.
Right, so you've said a couple times in your testimony and to other people that are, you know, that came up to the podium, that, um, like, let's give you an example, that the pickleball court may not fit in this space because of the columns that are currently in the building, but yet you didn't offer the fact that the, the space could be, um, fixed or, or changed to meet those needs, but yet on this test, now you are changing it to say that it could be. So I'm, I'm a little confused by that.
No, I was explaining the challenges, that doesn't mean that they're not able to be overcome, and if a tenant, pickleball tenant, that is the right tenant, size-wise and so forth, has interest here, we can accommodate that. The problem is that we don't have a pickleball tenant that's interested in being here right now, even though we have pursued them.
Okay, well, as a resident, I am drawing my own conclusion, that it's very concerning that, that I don't feel like Levin is pursuing the-
We're not, uh, taking statements.
Okay, I'll have to come back for that, but I, I feel like they're not doing your job to, to bring in a-
Again, you're sneaking it in regardless, we're not taking it, please. Was a good try.
Steve Members of the Zoning Board, my name is John Park, I'm a resident, uh, hello? Yep. Steve Members of the Zoning Board, my name is John Park, I live on 510 Hamilton Street, I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I also run two businesses in Franklin Township, Korean Barbecue Grill, please come check us out, as well as, as well as a little honors daycare, a low-income daycare right on Hamilton Street building. I know Levin's property very well, I grew up in this town, I used to-
So you have to stop turning away from the mic and speak right into the mic, she needs to be able to hear you.
Hold it in your hand, okay. Yeah. I used to go, I, I, I used to love the Kmart, I went school shopping there every, every September, right before I started school, so I have fond memories of that shopping center. So I just had very specific technical questions. You said currently the, the town hall, the, the space is 375 feet wide, right?
315 feet.
315 feet wide, in order to attract a national anchor tenant, you need to get it up to 500 feet wide?
Approximately for those Home Depots types that I've, yes.
Gotcha, and you said if we expanded it, it would go into the street the other way, right?
Technically, yes.
But couldn't you expand it the other way?
We have tenants that are in those buildings next to it.
Well, I mean, my, my friend Peter here was a tenant in one of those spots right next to it, and then you guys asked him to move to a different spot in order to clear that space out, didn't you?
We did.
Yep, so now aren't, aren't there no tenants there?
I should clarify, that was also something that was good for Peter as well.
Yep, I mean, it was great for Peter, he was very happy, but, uh, I mean, but now there's no tenants on the other side of, of that space, because you've moved them out, right?
On the Kmart space, you said?
Yep, in the Kmart space.
That's correct.
So now there is space to expand that way, to, to attract those national tenants?
No.
Okay, it's interesting. You said that, um, you've been mass marketing, you've been mass marketing and you've been trying all these things to lease out the space, right? Would part of your activities be fielding calls from brokers to, fielding calls from brokers in order to lease out the space? Like, if a broker was interested, I could call your office, and you would call them back?
Most certainly.
So, I mean, I have a friend here, his name is Nick DiMiglio, I think most people in this township know him, he's a broker, he represents a lot of commercial tenants, including myself, and he's told me that he's called you a couple of times and you haven't called him back.
Let's make sure we stick to questions and, and not be-
Is there a reason why you haven't called him back?
-be careful not to speak from someone else.
That wasn't his, now, that was fine, but it's, it's time to move on to a different subject, we'll be done with your questions, because he didn't testify, uh, to those issues and-
Well, he said he was fielding calls. Just one more question, because I feel like, uh, so, I mean, I have, I have a friend named Bill Grippo, he was on the cha- he's on the Board of Education, I know that there's a huge demand for pre-Kingdom Garden, especially in this township, in which we could get a ton of federal funds to support those pre-Kingdom Garden, um, activities. Couldn't we ha- have you reached out to Bill Grippo about potentially having a pre-Kingdom Garden in that space?
I don't know if I reached out to Bill or not, again, I oversee the leasing, so I have other people there, so I can't say they have or have not.
Okay, no further questions.
Good evening, Board, good evening. My name is Vanessa Davenport. My name is Vanessa Davenport, can you hear me now? Okay, my name is Vanessa Davenport, I live 211 Lannington Way in Franklin Township. I noted on your website that it's, that you, um, talk about industrial office and retail space, and I wanted to know if this is your first foray into residential space, maybe?
Yes.
It is. And could that be why you're pushing the residential side rather than the commercial side, rather than the retail side?
That's not accurate, I'm not pushing that one way or the other, I'm pushing commercial more than anything else, that's my responsibility.
What's your experience in the residential side, though, that would?
I think he just mentioned his, he is testifying to the retail efforts, or the efforts to attract retail, not residential. That will come up under another witness.
Okay, then I'll hold my question, thank you.
Mr. Singer, don't you have an application approved for, um, townhomes on Cedar Grove? Like, three or four years ago? No? Okay, sorry.
Not that I'm aware of, no. I'll, I'll jump into that, there was a piece of property that Levin had on Cedar Grove, uh, that they did get approved, and then they sold that to a developer, yeah.
Linda Powell, 22 Buffett Drive, uh, I just have some points of clarification, things that I didn't understand. You talked about the width of the store, it's not based on square footage, the needs of these bigger stores, it's just based on width? It was obviously, you know, I understand the point of not wanting to expand a facility out onto JFK Boulevard, um, although it looks like that apartment pictures I saw were doing almost that, but there's a lot of parking, you know, you talked about making it shorter in length, isn't it also possible to make it longer in length, the building? To make it more square footage?
That would be counterintuitive to what retail looks for, they don't look for a depth, even that what's existing now, the depth of the building, if we took it out into the parking lot, would expand that depth, and that would make it less attractive to retailers.
So they're only, they're only interested in wide stores, not long stores, if not square footage?
They're interested in square footage, and that has a combination to do of, of width and depth, width being one of the very important factors, because they require a minimum square footage in terms of their frontage, for their facade, for their trade-
I'm still a little confused.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm back again, Nicole Pride.
Normally, you're only going to get one shot at a witness, but-
But thank you for your grace, I appreciate it. There's, there's two things, one, um, I just need for myself, just greater clarity, so when the gentleman was here and he talked about some of the vacant retail that exists now, that may give you more flexibility to reconfigure the footprint of your building to accommodate new retail, can you just explain why that's not a possibility? Or maybe I missed it, I just don't understand.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
So, okay, beyond Kmart, there's other vacant retail space, so the example given was that Venus has moved their location, so, and if, if I understand it correctly, so Venus Jewelers where they were before, that is now vacant space, is that correct?
That is correct.
There's no, there's no tenant that's slated to go there?
That's correct.
And so there's other vacant spaces there, does that give you greater room and flexibility to accommodate a big-box retailer to come in? That's the question.
I, I think the answer is no. Uh, there's other vacancy in the strip that butts up against the, essentially butts up against the Kmart box, that would be impacted by trying to expand that building outward, if you're looking at the building left.
So, just to make sure I understand what you're saying, let's just say you don't move into the parking space, but just looking at the footprint of the vacant spaces that you have now, that are next to the, the old Kmart building, all of that combined does not give you the flexibility to attract a new big-box retailer?
It does not, no.
Okay, and then, is it possible, I don't know if you've done this already, is there documentation that shows who you've reached out to and what their feedback has been, just so that, I feel like for myself and the chatter that I hear here, seems like, um, we need some type of good-faith documentation that shows that the best effort was being made to be able to bring in retail. And so, this process would go, I think, even better for you if you were able to show documentation, I reached out to this store, this is the feedback that they got, and just to show us who's been contacted and who hasn't, and then, sorry, last statement, um-
Question, you mean?
Question, 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 and is there any way publicly for us to see if your leasing fees or your leases are competitive with other shopping centers? So, I, I think what I struggle with, too, is given the, the density of our town already, and the location that it does seem, you know, from a layperson's standpoint, that it is a very appealing and attractive space for retailers, but if we see other plazas being built and other plazas getting those retailers, then to me, it makes me think that maybe you're not as competitive with the other shopping centers that we see in other towns, and so is there any way for us to see how, what you charge, how that compares to other plazas?
Sorry, I didn't want to delay that.
Do what you have to do, I get it.
So, there was a couple of questions I think you had in there, uh, one was, are we competitive? The answer is yes, there is a way for you to understand that by talking to the brokerage community and the way that works. Uh, we, we do offer-
I'm sorry, so when you say, I'm sorry, just, I want to be very clear, so when you say-
Mr. Chairman, can, can he at least finish his questions, uh, answers?
I just, I, I wouldn't be able to comprehend the rest if I didn't get the first part of the statement, so I just needed a clarifying point, I'm, I'm sorry, but go ahead, and then I'll try to remember, go.
All right. Commissions are offered as an incentive to the brokers that represent those tenants, and our commissions are at or above market, so that's pretty clear. The other thing that you mentioned is, is that, you know, about attracting those tenants, I mean, it, it should be noted that the tenants are the ones that make the decisions to where they want to be and where they should be. That is what I was referring to in my statement when they talked about cannibalization studies, they understand their business, they understand their market, and as much as we may want them there, which we do, they do not want to be there. That is the simple answer to it.
Yeah, no, I get that, I, I mean, that's the bottom line for you. I, I think my question is, from where I sit, there may be other reasons other than traffic or other things that they consider, where it comes down to the bottom line, and so my question was, is there a way for us to see, is there some website, any public documentation to see how the leases or the, the rates, the fees for-
No.
-retailers in your plaza and another plaza that doesn't exist? Okay, thank you.
Nor in any other plaza.
Yep, got it.
Nick DiMiglio, 18 Naperti Place, and so I had one question, but now standing there, I've developed it to three. So my first question is, you also own and manage the North Brunswick Shopping Center, where there's a McDonald's?
That's correct.
Okay, so the McDonald's that's there, which is the drive-thru that we're creating here at the Kmart shopping center with the two lanes, what do they pay in rent?
I'm not sure that's a matter for the board.
It will, let me, let me just go with this a little bit. You're the leasing supervisor, right? So you're the-
Is that level of detail appropriate?
It's-
I think we're, I think we should stick to the testimony and questions relative to the testimony.
It will, about rental abilities for that shopping center, so what do they pay in rent?
I don't think-
We're not good at answering that question.
Okay, so let me rephrase the question.
Hold on a second.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second.
You're asking him, I'm not a real estate agent or an expert or anything like that, but my version of common sense tells me it's a little difficult to compare a McDonald's on Easton Avenue in Rutgers Plaza with a McDonald's in North Brunswick.
That's where I was coming.
Shopping center.
Are they comparable?
It's not relevant to what we're talking about here.
It is it is relevant because...
Rephrase it or ask another question?
It is relevant because we're trying to figure out whether his rent is competitive.
Let's compare apples to apples, okay? You're comparing stores in two different towns into very, very different locations.
Okay.
Okay? Ask your next question, please.
Let's rephrase that.
Yes, okay.
Let's rephrase that. Are the rents competitive in both the towns?
Yes.
Okay. And my other question is, what is the standard work letter for a tenant for the Kmart Shopping Center?
There's no standard work letter. They're all very tenant-specific. Every tenant has their own needs, and that's why they have their work letter.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Hello. My name is Adrienne Stavropoulos, 30 Fox...
You have to say your name a little bit louder and slower.
Gotcha. My name...
And closer.
Is I Germs.
Louder.
Adrienne Stavropoulos, better?
Yeah.
30 Foxwood Drive. It's not like me to not have pen and paper. I always have a pen, usually paper, so please bear with me while I get my thoughts together. Each person who spoke brought up a lot of a lot of important points. I have been resident in this...
Wait, now, what you're supposed to be doing now is asking your question.
I'm getting to that.
Okay.
So I have been in this resident in this neighborhood for 31 years, and you say that this is public and everyone could know about what's going on here. Meanwhile, the only reason I'm here today is because someone put a letter in my door. So how are we supposed to be able to find out more about this that's going on, first? Secondly, if you're all about the people here and what's best for Franklin Township, which seems like that's not what we want, and you're not being successful with getting the tenants, have you thought about maybe selling your lease and maybe getting another another person in so that you can not be stressed that you can't get pickleball or something else that might bring jobs as opposed to bringing more people here, more traffic, less opportunity? So my first question, did you get it?
What was the first question?
Well, you had me speak louder and slower so that you can document. So, did you get it?
What is your question?
Okay, I have two. I'll go I'll skip to the second one, because the first one, like, I'm really, really, this has moved me a lot. I moved here from the city so that I can be in a residential area, suburban area, not to be surrounded by apartments.
Please ask the question.
Well, I did, and since he didn't remember, I have to, and I didn't have my paper, I'm just working it out. If you cannot find another retail business that would benefit Franklin Township and the residents here, have you considered perhaps selling so that someone else could try?
Okay, stop. That's the question.
Is that a financial? Okay, go.
Go ahead. No, we haven't considered selling.
So is there a reason for that?
I think he's answered the question, Mr. Chairman. The question was, have you considered selling? The answer was, no, we have not considered selling.
Yes, and I actually...
He's an employee of Levin. He is not the person who makes the decisions at Levin.
So as an employee who directs, who speaks directly to those above you, could you perhaps talk to those in control and say, hey, the people of Franklin Township don't want this?
This is not this is not asking questions on based on his testimony.
I got it. How can I find out, rather than having someone put a note in my door to let me know when this is when meetings are going to occur? How can I find out?
Franklin Township website.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, we will close to the public. Next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, our next witness will be Scott Turner from Menlo Engineering. I believe counsel will want to swear him in. Mr. Turner, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Turner, can you repeat your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Scott Turner, T-U-R-N-E-R.
Mr. Wozneski, you want to qualify a witness?
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Turner, will you please first go through your educational background, your licensure, and then your experience in testifying in front of zoning boards, or even, in fact, if you've testified in front of this board before? Let me ask the questions. How long have you been an engineer?
Approximately 25 years license.
You have a current New Jersey license?
I do.
And have you practiced before, boards before?
Yes, I have.
I think you've been before this board before.
I have been.
He's accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Turner, if you would please run through this presentation of the site plan that we've submitted to the board, and if you may, while you're going through it, you know, there was a letter both from CME and from the municipal planner, to the extent that your testimony can address any of their comments, that would be helpful.
Sure, I can do that. I put a an exhibit up on the screen. It is titled "The Easton at Rutgers Plaza." It is...
Will you just mark the exhibits, please? So this will be A1?
This is A1.
And just tell us what it is, Mr. Turner.
"The Easton at Rutgers Plaza, Existing Conditions Exhibit Dated March 20, 2024." It is an exhibit of the existing conditions by way of an aerial photograph. Okay, just very quickly for the record, the property is known as Block 385, Lot 2.07. It contains 27.4 acres. It has 1,155 feet of frontage along JFK Boulevard and 970 feet along Easton Avenue. Just for orientation purposes here, we're going to consider north to be straight up. It'll just be a little easier for direction purposes. Easton Avenue is located up at the top of the sheet. JFK Boulevard is located on the left-hand side of the sheet, and then the property itself is kind of highlighted in this whitish line type that I'm currently surrounding there. So this is obviously known as the Rutgers Plaza Shopping Center. It's located in the GB, General Business District. On the property are located four buildings. There's a McDonald's fast food restaurant being constructed in the northwest corner. The Stop &amp; Shop supermarket is in the northeast corner, and in between both of those buildings, closest to Easton Avenue, is a an existing bank with drive-throughs. And then we have the existing multi-tenant retail building that's located on the southeast corner of the property, and then the building in question, the Kmart building, that's located down at the southwest corner. That existing Kmart building contains 107,600 square foot of footprint area. The property is accessed by way of two driveways, one off of JFK Boulevard. It is a right-in, a right-out, and I believe it also allows for lefts as well. The Easton Avenue driveway is a right-in, right-out driveway, and that are the that is the two main access points into the center itself. The property has 1,257 existing parking spaces. The property is surrounded by a variety of uses. There are garden apartments and townhouses to the south and west, Wendy's fast food establishment, and the DNR Canal State Park is located just up to the top of the sheet, to the north across the street, Easton Avenue. And then we have another shopping center to the east, which also has access onto Easton Avenue. Move to the... We can mark this exhibit as A2, if you'd like.
And just describe what A2 is.
Sure. A2 is a rendering, "The Easton at Rutgers Plaza, Overall Plan Exhibit Dated March 20, 2024." Again, it's a aerial image with the proposed site plan overlaying on top. So the proposal, as you're all aware, is to demolish the existing Kmart building located in the southwest corner and replace it with a four-story apartment building, which is identified in this tan color, which I'm outlining with the cursor. That building will, again, total 250, 475 square feet, and it will include a small basement with residence storage, mechanical rooms, and then first floor will be the amenities packages, and then we have the residential floors above. And in behind the front of the new building are these alcoves that are in between the two fingers that will encompass the other recreational spaces that are proposed on the property. The building itself will be approximately 47 feet high, and it'll have a footprint area of 62,485 square feet, so significantly smaller in footprint area from the from the from the Kmart building. The building will be set back 130.7 feet from JFK Boulevard. It will be set back 660 feet from Easton Avenue and 158.1 feet from the rear property. The there will be 200 units within this new building.
The rear property?
From the rear property.
Rear, okay.
Rear, yes.
I don't like to interrupt you in the middle of this. Can you, you gave the setback from Kennedy Boulevard and a setback from Franklin Green, the rear property. How's that compare with what exists?
When I'm done with my next section, I'll grab my plan, and I'll let you know what that number is. So the building itself will include 200 units. Those units will be broken down into 69 one-bedroom units, 123 two-bedroom units, and eight three-bedroom units. 20% of the units, or 40 in total, will be set aside as affordable. Beyond the limits of the the new residential building, within the space of the multi-tenant retail component, we are proposing to provide some additional area in front of that building by way of pedestrian accessways, new sidewalks by pulling the driveway up a little bit further away, and it will provide some opportunity for some outdoor dining and or seating areas. This this building will also receive facade improvements that will be discussed by by the applicant's architect. The site itself, in order to provide what's needed for this new residential component, will include a realignment of the internal access driveway, particularly the driveway that comes in from Easton Avenue. Currently, that driveway came came up into the site and then continued on a path that was straight down towards the the Kmart building itself. And what we've done is we've taken that driveway and realigned it to allow for the residential component to kind of stand on its own in terms of the parking spaces and and anything else that would be going on with respect to that area. The other parking lots that are there to support the Stop &amp; Shop and the and the other retail components will will, in essence, remain as they currently exist today, with the exception of additional landscaped islands to provide some additional landscape enhancements and improvements, and to provide some additional EV charging stations that are stations that are required. We've also provided some additional significant pedestrian circulation improvements. We are providing new sidewalk connections from JFK Boulevard into the property, as well as from Easton Avenue up that main driveway and into the site, and sidewalk connections from the apartment buildings and the other commercial buildings. All of them will sort of be all connected together and allow anyone to get from one space to another by way of the sidewalk components that are being added to the site plan itself. The the building, the the new building, we have a conventional parking lot in the front of that building, and we have a row of EV charging spaces that are along the JFK Boulevard side of the property. This building will also have a dedicated drop-off and pick-off lane, pickup lane that's located off of the driveway that runs across the the front, so as not to disturb any traffic within that area. So the in addition to the the parking components and the driveway components and pedestrian, I had mentioned that we're also providing some additional, significant additional landscaping by way of either new islands or adding islands in or or modifying the islands that are currently there with either new landscaping or or, you know, things of that sort. We're also adding in a new open space, you know, area that's could be used for events that's located up or just off the northwest corner of the front of the new building, again, all located within what I'll call the residential side of the shop of the center itself. So that's been added to this plan, and we've, of course, added some significant landscaping along the JFK Boulevard perimeter, as well as some along the rear. There are some encumbrances in that area that prohibit us to do landscaping in certain areas, and I'll detail that a little bit in in just a little bit. The overall site numbers for parking on site now will be 1,100. So we've reduced the parking from 1,257 to 1,100, and that includes the installation of 88 EV charging stations scattered throughout the property. There is a total of 1,017 parking spaces required for the entire center, including the residential component. We are also adding two new monument signs off of the driveway coming in from JFK Boulevard. There are small monument signs, 58 square feet each, 5.7-foot max height, and 10.8 feet maximum width. For landscaping, like I had mentioned, we've provided a a significant improvement over what's currently on the property, in my opinion. We are proposing to install 121 deciduous trees, 16 evergreen trees, 44 flowering trees, 830 shrub plantings, and thousands of ground cover plantings. The tree replacement has been satisfied. There are 16 trees required based on the tree replacement calculations, and we are providing 137 trees of qualifying size. So we comply. The lighting on site will be improved with LED pole and wall-mounted fixtures, which will all be in compliance with municipal standards. As you would imagine, all the utilities that are required for the shopping center is there and available for extension into the residential component, which includes sewer, water, gas, electric, telephone, et cetera. Stormwater management, we've provided stormwater management upgrades as needed to comply with NJDEP standards. We've also complied with the DNR Canal Commission standards as well for stormwater management. We're providing additional drainage, inlets, underground piping, two new water quality structures that are required by the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission, the DNR Canal. And we've been through an earlier review from them. We have to resubmit the plan for for another as an update to the current approval, but we've complied with their standards and have gone through a review with them already. So we are complying with NJDEP standards, water quality improvements, and the overall net in coverage, the impervious coverage on site, is being reduced by 63,500 square feet. So the 78.6% impervious coverage existing will be reduced to 73.2%, and the overall building coverage will be reduced by 47,700 square feet, which is 23% existing versus the 19-foot 19% proposed with the application. So in terms of stormwater management, by virtue of us reducing impervious coverage, we are significantly improving the the overall discharge from the property itself and providing the water quality enhancements that are needed to comply with standards. What I'll just do very quickly, just for the record... What I'll just do very quickly, just for the record, is the variances that are required. It does require a D1 use variance for the residential use within the GB zone, a D4 FAR variance, 0.30 is permitted, 0.23 is existing, and 0.35 is proposed. And FAR is a floor-area ratio requirement, where we take the floor area gross on all floors, not just footprint area, all floors, and that's what we, how we calculate floor-area ratio. It's different than just a building coverage, which would be a footprint area divided by the property area. This is taking all floors into account for FAR.
Wait, stop. Since you've stopped to do a little explaining, you, when you tell me about FAR, I don't, I don't get the calculation because it sounds like something's missing. Is it, what are you doing? Are you taking the footprint and dividing the footprint by the, the square footage of the footprint by the total square footage of the floors in the building?
No, you take the total square footage of all floor areas in all the buildings.
Yeah.
And divide that number.
Yeah.
By the lot area, by the overall property area.
Oh, okay.
That, that's what that ratio, that's how that's calculated.
All right. The, the second part of what it divided by was missing from your first explanation.
Thank you.
You had said that you were gonna finish something up, and then you were gonna give us a chance to ask some questions.
Sure.
Are, are we at a point where we can ask some questions now?
We will be in approximately 30 seconds.
Okay, I'll let you go then.
Thank you.
But I'm gonna hold you to that.
All right, so we got through the D4. The D6 height variance is 30 feet permitted, 47 feet is proposed. We have C variances as well, the number of freestanding signs, two are allowed, I'm sorry, two are existing. We have five total proposed, and that includes one for the McDonald's Center, the previously approved sign for the McDonald's Center, and then R2, so that gets us to the five. We have a maximum sign area, we're 25 square feet permitted, and 58 square feet is proposed for each individual sign, building-mounted signs. We have, two signs are proposed, and the architect will explain in detail what they are. And then finally is the impervious coverage, which is 70% permitted, 78.6% existing, and 73.2% proposed. And that's the extent of the variances required for the project. In addition to that, we do have staff reports. We have a staff report from Mark Healy, Director of Planning, dated February 14th, 2024, and his report requires testimony involving a lot of the variances and that sort of thing, and we have a planner that will do that. Any of the other engineering, project-related technical comments, we agreed to comply with, we're not seeking any relief from that letter. We have a letter from CME Associates, the Township Engineers' Office, dated February 27, 2024. I did review that letter in detail, as it's more relatable to what I am responsible for here. I did have a discussion with Mr. Mazzi in advance of this meeting and just to ask a couple of questions, and beyond that, we agree to comply with everything in his report as well.
Okay.
We have, we have traffic as well. We have a traffic report, February 29, 2024. They have no comments, everything's been addressed. We have a letter from the Fire Prevention, Mr. John House. We agree to comply with his requirements as well. And County of Somerset Department of Public Health and Safety, we don't have any issue with what they're asking for in regards to applying for the pool permit. And then we have a letter from the Sustainability Coordinator dated February 6, 2024. To the extent we can satisfy some of those comments, we will certainly do that. There are comments in here that I believe I've already tested to, testified to, and addressed, and anything else here that we can do to the extent possible, we will agree to comply with. And then we, like Mr. Wazniewski already pointed out, we had our meeting with the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission this week, and they had asked us for some additional information, which we will provide. Other than that, I think we were, the meeting was fairly favorable.
Well, I don't know about that. Because I think you were asked to consider a few design changes that kind of got blown off.
Mr. Chairman, no, they didn't get blown off. The representation was, is that we would provide them with, we would address the requests they made, but we obviously couldn't provide anything on that night.
Right.
And we would, we would have to go back to them with those, addressing the.
You're gonna address then potential brick facade?
They had made requests about color, about material, about some designs, and our architect said that, and he, they had also asked him to go and visit some other sites, which he's going to do, and then he's going to come up with a new rendering that tries to address to their satisfaction the concerns they raised.
Slanted roofs, things like that?
I can't say that he's gonna address them all, but he's going to address as many as possible, understanding that a slanted roof sometimes then increases the height, which then also has an impact on the DNR Canal, because they have a height issue as well as the municipality. So, we're trying to address the aesthetic issues raised by the historic. We didn't blow them off. We said we would prepare and submit new plans to them.
One thing that struck me as I drove by there, the mechanicals, are they gonna be on the roof?
They're going to be behind a parapet, so you won't see them from the ground.
Okay. The building that exists is very clearly visible from Kennedy Boulevard, everything that's on the roof. So, I'm assuming that a 17-foot-higher building will remedy part of that, and parapets, maybe the rest of it, because it's not a, there's some mature landscaping there, but what's on the roof of the Kmart building is very clearly visible. Not, it's not attractive.
Understood, that's why we'd like to take it down and put a different building up. But, Mr. Chairman, we are going to address those. I'm not gonna testify. We have an architect from the architect's office who's going to testify, probably not tonight, but we will have him testify before this board, but we, we did make a commitment to the Chair of the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission that we would come back with our efforts to satisfactorily address their design requests.
The other thing is 78% impervious existing.
That's correct.
70 is required.
That's correct.
You're at 73. And with all of this landscaping, removing buildings, removing concrete, parking, why can't it get to 70?
Because we've already lowered it 5% by reducing what we have.
Is that what the engineer says?
Yeah, I agree. There's always a balance in terms of how much you can get rid of, because you need to make sure you adequately park it, you provide the service driveways that are needed for the existing tenants, for the new building. You know, we, we, I think we try to do as much as we can to balance what's permitted within the zone versus what is existing and what we can do. And, you know, we, we have an opportunity to maybe reduce down, you know, a few more parking spaces, but we also gotta be sensitive to the tenant needs that may have leases and certain agreements in place, so we have to be mindful of where we take some additional pavement away.
We've always been pretty receptive to banking parking. Are there any options, opportunities for parking not to be constructed but banked for later use, which would count against lowering, or count towards lowering impervious coverage?
But I think generally, when you bank it, it's still counted towards your impervious coverage number.
But it's not covered.
I understand, no, I understand. We would still want the, we would still seek the variance, because if they ever did come and get built, then we would be over what our allowable coverage would be based on approval.
All right, could you investigate?
We can look into that.
What might be able to be banked, you know?
We will, we will look into that, Mr. Chairman.
Later date. The first question, I shouldn't have interrupted you before, but unfortunately.
No, that's fine.
The setbacks now.
Sure.
The new ones, how do they compare with the existing ones?
Sure, so the building of the proposed setback from JFK Boulevard, proposed is 130.7 feet, 130.7 feet. The existing building is set back 100 feet.
How much?
100 feet. So, we're increasing the setback by 30.7 feet. From Easton Avenue, it's generally the same, around 660 feet. From Easton Avenue, it, it's proposed to be at 158.1 feet, and the current building's at 140.
Being from Franklin Green?
Franklin Green, yes, from the property to the rear, immediately adjacent.
How do those setbacks conform to what we require? I'm only asking if it's, if it's possible to maneuver to lower impervious coverage.
So, the, so the front yard setback requirement is 20 feet, and we're well in.
What's considered the front yard in this building, Easton Avenue?
Easton Avenue, and technically JFK is a front as well. Mr. Chairman, they're both front yards.
Kennedy and Easton.
Yes.
So, 20 feet is the Easton Avenue?
Correct.
I'm not worried about the Easton Avenue.
Right, the rear yard, I think, is what you're concerned with, is maybe the rear.
Franklin.
30, 30 feet is permitted.
So, there is some wiggle room. Terms of moving it a few feet, decrease impervious coverage.
Mr. Chairman, I had raised a similar question in my report, which is, again, understanding they are lowering the impervious, but they are asking, they're still above, and there is a provision in our ordinance that allows, well, first of all, you had mentioned the land banking of parking, which this board and the planning board has allowed in the past, where the applicant has proven that the, you know, perhaps the ordinance requirements are higher than the practical needs, but in this case, the applicant is actually proposing slightly more parking than our ordinance actually requires. Our ordinance requires 1,100, and they're at 1,017. So, they're a little bit over, actually. So, my suggestion would be to the applicant, perhaps this would be the traffic engineer when he or she testifies, that they speak to the parking needs for the site and how much parking the applicant actually needs for the, for the uses on the site. Because I think that's an opportunity to get, you know, either a real reduction in terms of impervious coverage, or at least a reduction in, you know, in the form of landbank parking spaces. And for the public, what that means is, you know, they show where they could provide the parking, certain amount of parking, but the, in the short term, they basically leave it as grass or landscaping, and in the event in the future, it needs to get improved. In my experience, 95% of the time, when an applicant landbanks to spaces, it stays open space in perpetuity because it's never needed.
Thank you. Okay, any other, any board members with questions?
I do have a question regarding the height of the building. I'm just wondering if, since this is, this is basically a commercial area, how the look and feel that is for a four-story building in, with the existing commercial buildings?
I think the architect would be more appropriate or more suited to answer that question in terms of how we established, how we set the facades up.
So, do you, do you think it was the architect that decided it was gonna be a four-story building?
I, I can't answer that question. We get our direction from our client, and they had told us to design for a four-story building, which is what we do. I would assume that that's not just one person making that decision, it's, it's based on a number of factors, I would, I would presume.
Okay, it wasn't Mr. Singer, though, he said he had nothing to do with that.
Yeah, I, that's right.
I'm sorry, you were gonna ask two more questions? I didn't mean to jump in there.
No, I just had the one question. Wouldn't that be the engineer, though, that was making that?
No, no, the building, we worry, we, we deal with building footprints, we are generally given a footprint and what requirements are needed from an architect.
Okay.
And that's how we lay that out on a site plan.
Now, the, what's this, 134 trees you're gonna install? What's the caliber size on those?
We're installing.
How big are these, basically what I'm asking? That was quite a pile of paper you sent us.
The deciduous trees range basically two and a half to three-inch in caliber when they're planted, and their planted height is 12 to 14 feet for the most part.
Good.
Okay. The evergreen trees, of course, are planted at a little bit lower, six to seven feet in high, planting height, you know, grow to 15 to 20 feet tall, and then the flowering trees are nine to 10-foot planting height. But the deciduous trees, to me, that counts the most.
What about the, the evergreens? What type are they?
The evergreens are Dragon Lady Holly's and Nellie Stevens Holly.
Oh, good.
Other questions?
I do have a question for Mark. Affordable units were mentioned. As a township, where are we with our obligation and any insight on the 25 requirements?
Well, it's, it's, it's a good question. I mean, where are we as we stand right now is that our third round obligation is satisfied. The question really is where do we stand in the future? The state just came out with new legislation within the last month that's basically going to require the township to do another fair share plan within the next year or so. And we are going to have an obligation, and because of our size, the obligation is going to be significant. So, we will have a need for affordable housing.
Other questions?
Okay, you went kind of fast for me, anyway. CME, now you said you were gonna take care of all that, what they were asking for?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
How about the fire prevention?
Yes, we are.
You're gonna take care of that?
Correct.
How about the public health and safety?
We agree.
And my one last thing is what about Tara Keaton from Substan, Sustainability Coordinator? The memo from that?
Yes, that's the one that I, what I testified to is that to the extent we can accommodate her requests, we will do so. And, and that's, right now, that's what I can tell you, you know.
So, that really tell me anything, though.
Yeah, well, we could, we could go through that letter if you.
I think that one you should, and just for the record, she's writing that on behalf of the Environmental Commission. So, you know, I think maybe some of these technical reports, it may be sufficient to say you'll work it out with staff, but I think the Environmental Commission's comments, I think, are more, I'll just say, open-ended, if you will, they're considerations, so I think, I think you need to address those to the board.
Sure, we'll do that. And again, I am referring to the memo from Ms. Tara Kenyon dated February 20, February 6, 2024. The first bullet point is recommending the investigation of feasibility for solar panels on the roof, a green roof, cool roof technology, or at a minimum, a make-solar-ready roof. And I, I have been told that the building will be make-ready for solar panels in the future, but there's no intent to install them at this current time. But the building can accommodate that if needed. Second bullet is pervious pavement is recommended for the parking and interior driveways. We do not recommend pervious paving, especially in a high-traffic area such as this. Porous paving tends to tear apart, rip apart, and doesn't last long-term, and you wind up ripping it out and putting back regular asphalt in the long-term. We've accommodated all of the requirements for stormwater management, which is when we would normally, you know, utilize that type of pavement section. We don't need to do that because we comply with the standards. We don't need to do that because we comply with the standards. The third bullet point is in regards to the impervious coverage. I think we've covered that to the extent we can. The fourth bullet point, the Environmental Commission. Yes, correct. Yeah, I'll expand a little bit. Yes, she's referring to the proposed impervious coverage at 73.2%, which still exceeds the maximum permitted. As we've discussed, we will look into areas that we could possibly do some land banking or add some additional green space to get us down as close or at 70%. As much as we can do, we will agree to take a look at that. The Environmental Commission acknowledges the inclusion of the required make-ready EV charging. It is recommended that EV charging and make-ready parking spaces alternate by one parking space throughout the parking lot. Example is, you know, 135 as prepared as make-ready parking stations or have an EV charging station installed. I'm not exactly sure what she's asking for. You generally will line them up so that cars can charge in pairs because the charging stations will have two charging stations. So, you want them right next to one another. So, that's sort of how we have this established at this point in time. And I think that accommodates what she's looking for is to be able to allow multiple users to easily use the chargers without having to wait. So, dual charging stations can accommodate two parking spaces at one time. The next bullet point, the Environmental Commission recommends the use of native and/or pollinator plants that also provide stormwater management. We agree, we'll review it and comply with that standard. Anti-idling signs should be placed at various locations. I don't believe we have an issue with providing that signage. I think we can do that with, you know, relative ease. Second page, bike storage and bicycle repair stations are recommended at various locations. So, bike, I think we can agree to take a look at providing bicycle racks, potentially in areas that we think they would be utilized. We'll agree to do that. I've never seen a bicycle repair station, so I don't think we would accommodate that. But bicycle racks, I think, are something that we can accommodate. And the last one is, the Environmental Commission requests that the applicant provide a list of amendments made to the plans and supporting documents with all future resubmissions, and we don't have an issue with doing that.
Okay, it's, you can tell me if I'm incorrect, but it's my understanding you have to go back, get a certificate or certification from historic preservation. So, how you, how your review of what they're asking turns out, I guess, will basically be up to them. I'm comfortable letting them deal, if it gets to that point, letting them deal with establishing what historic presence they want this project present. Any other questions?
I want to take a minute to look at the sidewalks. I keep looking.
Correct. Correct. I'm moving it, I promise. That was not on purpose.
Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Shepherd. Emerald says he cannot hear you. You have to bring, use the mic at the end.
Yeah, I got it. Testing, testing. All right, good. So, now, it looks like we do make our way around to the food store.
Correct.
Right, okay. And this way, we make our way around to the little stores over here.
Correct.
Doltry, the vacant, and the Crunch Fitness, and whatever else is here. Now, we have two other things that are out there. And since this is supposed to be like a setup where people don't have to leave the premises to do things, where's the, I don't even see, I don't even, there we go. Here's the, here's the bank, right? No sidewalks to the bank, are there? I think we need sidewalks to the bank, don't we?
We do not provide a sidewalk to the bank directly. So, that would be something we would consider taking a look at to add.
Okay, and the only restaurant that we have, do we provide sidewalks there? Looks like we do.
Correct, yes. There's a sidewalk connection to McDonald's.
Good. Then, the only one that's not taken care of is the, is the bank. I'm going to get you for this, really.
I'm sure.
I just need one other clarification. When you refer to the Kmart building as X number of square feet, are you including the attached shops with that?
No.
Just what's?
Just the Kmart building itself.
The old Chinese restaurant and the present Venus, that's extra square?
That's extra square footage, not included in my number that I provided to you for the Kmart building footprint.
It's still not enough extra square feet to enlarge the main big box building to the standards that were testified that are needed. I think that your rendering up there kind of points out a little bit. Now, the building can't be very easily expanded toward Kennedy, and it can't be expanded toward the shopping center. It's got limited space behind it. And if you go forward toward Eastern Avenue, you're taking out parking. That really says more in a picture than the, a little clearer, anyway, than the testimony was about the constraints when it comes to enlarging it to make the space to make it a marketable, a different marketable building without actually impacting a lot of the site.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
The questions about parking spaces, I think, are at somewhere. There were about 1,100 total parking spots.
Correct.
And how many of those are going to be EVs? There were some about multiple charging.
Eighty-eight. There's eighty-eight stations.
How many are there now?
I don't know. I do believe there are at least a couple. I think, and I don't even want to say because I don't want to misrepresent because I'm not sure.
And those eight will be for the residents as well as for the?
Correct. Yeah, they're scattered throughout the entire property.
Others?
I have one more, real simple one. 200 units, that's quite a few units. Has there been accommodations for move-in and move-out loading spaces?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
For the residential building, obviously.
Right.
Have accommodations been made for tenants to move in and out, a loading space?
Yeah, if, when the architect testifies, you'll see on what he presents, there's a spot on the Kennedy Boulevard side of the building that's indicated for that.
How many parking spaces are in the kind of dedicated, what you called before, the residential enclosed area?
I don't know if I have that.
1,100 total, right? How many are in that?
Correct. I don't know if I have that number. I will tell you, the number of parking spaces required for the residential component is 387. So, I would, I'm going to take a stab and say that there is at least 387. Probably a few more, but that's probably about the number.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I presume you've taken the handicap situation in effect, right?
I'm sorry, sir?
I presume that you've taken the handicap situation in effect, right?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. We comply completely with the, all the ADA standards.
Anything from you?
We have two questions. Are any of, the area that's more conducive for the residential, is that going to be restricted only for use for the residents? Or is this just going to be open?
In terms of the amenity package?
Would there be signage that says for residential parking only? Or is the whole parking, the whole parking lot open?
I don't know, Mark. I'm not sure. I would say, I would certainly think that there would never be a need for somebody that wants to go to Stop &amp; Shop to park over in this section. There's ample parking for Stop &amp; Shop, the bank, as well as all those retail components. So, I don't know if we've gotten to that level of detail, honestly, in terms of whether or not they're going to be restricted.
Okay. And the other question is, you had said you were going to comply with CME's report.
Correct.
But they did make one comment, comment number 24, where they talk about reviewing the JFK entrance for a traffic signal. Are you agreeing to that?
No, we are agreeing that the study, the warrant analysis, would be done.
Okay. And is the traffic engineer going to speak to that to some degree?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any others?
Yeah, I have a question. So, what's the maximum occupancy? Like, you said 200 units, so how many?
I don't know. That's beyond my area of expertise.
Do we, how many people will stay there approximately? And the point I'm trying to, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, it's okay. So, the bedroom count, as I testified to before, will be 69 1-bedroom units, 123 2-bedroom, and 8 3-bedroom.
Sure, because I'm trying to get a correlation between the earlier testimony that for something like ShopRite or Stop &amp; Shop to survive, it needs more people in there. So, if this is the answer for that, then there has to be some kind of account that it sustains Stop &amp; Shop, right?
That's beyond me. I'm just here to do the engineering. I'm sure possibly other professionals here and who's going to do some testimony can help answer that question.
Yeah, I don't think that's a question that the civil engineer can answer. I'm sure there's somebody from their team that can answer that question. How many, basically the question is, how many residents do they expect based on the 200 units and the bedroom count? So, I'm sure somebody can answer that in the future.
So, exactly. So, that was my pertinent question of what's the maximum capacity of that place?
Of what place? I'm sorry.
Residential building.
I don't know. That's not something we can answer.
I think Mr. Wisnewski heard the question, so I think somebody else will have to answer that question.
There will be somebody who will come up, probably not tonight, but we'll testify to that.
All right, thank you.
We'll try to answer it.
And I just want to add a point of clarification. The EV parking spaces are make-ready parking spaces. If I didn't clarify that before, I want to make sure it's on the record that they are make-ready parking spaces.
What does that mean?
So, what that means is that all of the infrastructure, the conduit, the underground conduit, is put in and installed so that in the future, the electric and the physical charging stations can be placed online as required by law. They don't have to rip up the parking, and they can easily make those connections.
What is that timeframe for those to come online?
I don't have that law with me.
But is this a statute, right?
It's a statute code, yes.
33% increments, 5, 10, 15 years, something like that?
Yes, it's in order of that magnitude.
Okay, if there's no other board questions, we'll be opening to the public, but I'm going to say very clearly upfront, the last question will be at 10 o'clock. So, if you have questions for the engineer based on his testimony, waiting to hear.
Mr. Turner, John McCall of Five Webster Road, Somerset. Can you hear? Excellent. So, Mr. Turner, thank you very much for the detailed explanation and all of the work that you've done here. Did you do, I wasn't here for it, did you do the McDonald's?
No.
Design?
No, I did not.
You did not? Okay. So, the rendering that's on here is taken from another engineering firm?
Correct.
Okay. Did you start the engineering on this contingent upon McDonald's?
No.
All right. Do you know when you started the engineering on this, the design?
What year? 2019 is when we first started working on this project.
Okay.
And it was on and off since then.
And the reason why is because the individual who was there beforehand was saying that they're working very hard on keeping it a commercial residence. But if you started the engineering on 2019, I think that might be a little bit, they overlap a little bit too much, you know? Have you started any of the procedures for getting any of the, what are they called, engineering leeways and DOTs and all of that work that's going on?
So, the outside agency permitting was started back when we first initially prepared the project. Dean Arcanaal Commission has an application that's been applied for. We need to submit new plans in the appropriate time to continue their review. We have a Somerset County Planning Board application in. The approval is pending. We have a review letter that we need to address. The Soil Conservation District, we already had. Again, when we first initially brought this project to the board, we proceeded with those outside agency permits, but we'll have to update them.
Sure. Was your firm involved at all in any of the warehouses that have been going up so precipitously in this county?
I don't think that matters.
All right. Were you aware that in the past, let's say, a year, that they were considering a four-lane highway for JFK?
Not that I'm aware of. I was not aware of that.
You were not aware of that particular traffic study? And that's for the traffic people, so we can leave that alone. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, board. I appreciate that.
Hello. My name is Bill Grippo, G-R-I-P-P-O, and it's 199 Pierce Street, Somerset. First of all, I want to thank you for your service, zoning board. I'm not here as a member of the Board of Ed tonight, but I thought my job was rough. You've got a tough job up there. And Bob, you're the same charming man that I knew years ago. Thank you. So, my question is.
This one?
My questions, I said my name. My question is about, obviously, the youth of our town and the safety of that parking lot. If you could explain a little clearer, and maybe Bob could get back up and do his thing with the map. Going into the parking lot from JFK, making that right turn or, you know, to get in there, coming in from Eastern Avenue and going out from Eastern Avenue, you mentioned a separate line for the cars, for the apartment designated just for the apartment people. So, I think I heard before something about a traffic light. Just as a statement, that parking lot right now is like a checkerboard, and it's a mess. And so, I'm wondering how you can put integrity into, I'm worried about, look, here's what I'm worried about. It's a statement. I'm worried about kids who work at McDonald's, kids who run to McDonald's after school and use that place as a, as another, a drag lot, you know? We all grew up at hot dog stands, right? And so, the cars are going to be coming in and out of there. What is the responsibility for the board, for the council, for these guys to assure the safety of drivers without putting speed bumps all over the place? So, is my question clear? I'm worried about the safety of entering and exiting that with apartments. I mean, I think.
You want the traffic guy?
I'm not giving that an opinion.
I think it's a traffic issue.
I'm not giving an opinion on the program. I just want to know how our kids, especially our teenagers, are going to be. I just want to know how our kids, especially our teenagers, are going to be...
Well, let's, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you know, forget traffic. He talked about lines going in and out. So, you got to explain that.
Okay, let's, I think the civil engineer can explain, certainly from the site plan perspective.
Yeah.
I think if he could provide a comparison to the board, to the existing situation and the exhibit that's on here, of whether this site plan is more or less safe from, I think, a vehicular movement perspective and maybe pedestrian perspective between the existing and the proposed. Is that basically what you're asking at this point?
Basically, and I'm asking if McDonald's, and this is not your, your purview, but if McDonald's has given any thought to the cars coming in and out just for hamburgers? Forget about who lives there.
So, let's have the civil engineer, again, he's speaking to this site plan, let's speak to, let's have him speak to the onsite circulation comparing to the existing and the proposed. And then, there may be some other traffic-related issues, like the site going onto JFK, et cetera, that's probably going to be better explained by the traffic engineer. But let's have Mr. Turner explain the onsite circulation.
That's it, that's the one thing I'm not going to let go of. I just want to make sure that we have a safe plan.
Sure, so I, I put back up on the screen Exhibit A1, which is the existing conditions exhibit. And you could see on this plan here, this is the driveway that comes in off of JFK Boulevard. It comes up into the site, and then there's a four-way intersection at this, what I call the main driveway in, which is the driveway coming in from Eastern Avenue. It comes in, and as I had previously testified to, comes up to the intersection with the driveway off JFK, but then it continues across and comes straight up into the front of the old Kmart building.
If you could go back to that McDonald's driveway, how do they get into McDonald's from Eastern Avenue?
Well, that, that's, that's what's proposed. But right now, in the existing condition, this is the driveway leading in from Eastern Avenue, a straight run up to the front of Kmart. And then, we have the driveway that comes in off of JFK Boulevard, which will not be changed with respect to this application. This first section of driveway from Eastern Avenue does not get changed with respect to this new application. It's beyond that is where the changes occur. And the one thing that you do not have on this particular project is you don't have updated regulatory signage, striping, you know, crosswalks, accessibility sidewalks, and all of those things that are going to be incorporated into the new plan, which I flipped over now, A2. Here's the driveway off Eastern Avenue, the intersection with JFK driveway. And then, once we go further south into the site, heading towards the rear of the property or the, the new residential building, this is where we, we took that existing driveway and turned it easterly to keep it away from the front of the new residential building.
So, take me in from C2G, from JFK Boulevard. I'm coming down JFK from St. Matthias. I want to go in and get a hamburger. Where's my car going?
You can come in off of JFK Boulevard, and then you make either, if you're coming in off JFK, you make the left into these three driveway openings that have been designed and approved for McDonald's.
Are there cars parked there?
There is a parking lot in that location, yes. And that's not being touched with this application. That's all there per the approved plans by another engineer. We did not touch it. It's here for informational purposes, just to demonstrate how it interacts with the rest of the site plan. Again, with respect to the other improvements that were being made on this property with this application, in my mind, in my opinion, and their significant safety improvements and enhancements, is the fact that we are improving all of the signage, all the striping in accordance with current MUTCD standards, which is the Uniform Transportation Code. And we are also providing significant improvements to the overall pedestrian enhancements and circulation on the property, which provides for a safer experience by adding the sidewalks alongside the driveways and connecting them all to all of the various components within the shopping center. And that's, that's absent now.
So, when you come in off of Eastern Avenue now, coming from 287, there's a wall that goes up. That wall, obviously, is right there. That wall's obviously going to stay there on the other side, the other side.
Correct. This, this is an existing wall that will remain.
Yeah.
And there'll be a new wall installed on the, what I'll call the westerly side of the driveway, in order to get this new sidewalk installed, running up the driveway from Eastern Avenue.
So, that's a two, two-lane driveway then? In and out?
It's an in-and-out driveway, correct. And I will point out, we do have a, we had a review by the Franklin Township Police Traffic Safety Bureau. We have a letter from them dated February 29, 2024, that they've reviewed the captioned plans, which are the plans that the board has in front of them, and they have no further comments.
So, I answer this question. I'm trying not to make a statement, this is hard for me. The, 30 kids come in after school, 20 cars come in. How does that, how does that work? How do we, how do we enter that? And I'm not just talking kids, you're going to have residents coming home from work, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Is this about the McDonald's?
How do, that's a, how do we fit people in that very clustered, left-hand corner where there's so much room elsewhere? And that's, this is not your problem, because McDonald's...
Well, we're just saying, Mr. Chairman, we really have...
I would have put a nice Italian restaurant there, but that's another issue.
They're really to answer questions about something that's already been approved and not part of this application. It's on the property, obviously, but this has already been approved by the municipality.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers here. I'm trying to figure out how to keep people safe.
There's a number of other people that would like to ask questions.
I understand.
Would it be appropriate to ask to look at additional traffic calming measures, speed tables?
We can certainly, we can certainly take a look. I believe the property is subject, I'm, I'm assuming to Title 39 and to the extent that that works, but we can certainly take a look. And I, I will tell you, look, my, my name and my license, my professional license is on all of these plans, and I would not have signed them, I wouldn't be in front of you testifying under oath if I did not feel that this was a safe plan.
Understood.
Bottom line.
Okay, we'll take questions from the people who are presently in line, and that's it.
Kiki Anastasikos, 3204 Enclave Circle in Somerset. Mr. Turner, thank you for your testimony. Could you please explain to us why the building does not include a basement, which would eliminate the need for all these extra parking spaces?
The basement doesn't contribute to the requirement for parking. The basement is strictly for storage and mechanical.
Yes, I understand that. But why didn't the architects and the engineers include an underground parking? Could it be, as I hear from some of the residents, that the reason why the plans, as they stand, do not include an underground garage, as my building does in Canal Walk, is because there is a high-water table in that area, which makes the whole entire area, and there are residents here that have testified in front of the esteemed Township Council within the last two weeks...
We're moving into a statement here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas. Are you aware of the fact that the area is flood-prone, especially Eastern Avenue?
That the area is flood-prone? My responsibility as the engineer is to review the conditions on the property and the surrounding areas and make sure we don't make those conditions any worse. And that's what we've done, and that's what the review is through not only the professionals here in this municipality, also with the Dean Arcanaal Commission, and to any other appropriate, including Somerset County. Eastern Avenue is a Somerset County jurisdictional road.
Right.
So, they will review, and if they have any comments or concerns about drainage conditions, we will hear from them in the letter.
So, am I, am I correct to understand that you have not received, you have not received any approval from the DRCC or the, any of the other agencies that are concerned about flooding or about traffic? Can you, I got confused a little bit. Can you tell us exactly what approvals have you received as of today?
Right, right now, we have a pending application that...
Pending application, I understand what that is. But could you tell us what approvals you have gotten, please?
We don't have any approvals, other than we had a freehold, or Somerset Union Soil Conservation District approval, that dated back to when the plans looked a little bit different than what they were here. We added on another application, or I shouldn't say another application, same application, but with a slightly different site plan itself, and it doesn't look that much different. But we have a certification from soil erosion, we have a pending application from Delaware River and Canal Commission, and a pending application with Somerset County Planning Board.
Yes.
And those are the only permits other than local that we need.
Thank you, I understand the difference between, I'm guessing people here understand the difference, although we are laypeople, laymen and women, we don't understand all of the technical terms, but am I clear in understanding that you have very few final approvals as of yet?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Let's be, let's be clear about that, too. Some of those approvals, and you may know them better than I, can't be accomplished until this board acts.
Sure.
So, the fact that they have them right now or don't isn't so relevant. What's relevant is that it would be a condition of an approval that they have to get these permits. So, let's not waste more time on that.
Okay, so, if you're aware of the fact that the area in Eastern Avenue and the surrounding area has a high-water table and it's flood-prone, why do you insist on, on a non-impervious coverage for the parking lot? Where...
Okay, I have another problem with this question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Right now, we're making an assumption that it's a high-water table.
Yeah.
Yeah, you made the statement that it was based on what you heard from people. So, if we don't have any evidence that there is...
Evidence, you want me to go get some evidence? I can bring it at the next hearing.
I don't want to have hearsay. There's engineering that, that can deal with this. If it is a high-water table, fine. If it's not...
I withdraw that comment, Mr. Thomas.
Okay, but you can't just come here and say, "I hear it's a high-water table."
No.
All right?
Is it true that the Eastern Avenue area in front of the strip mall floods frequently?
Directly in front of the strip mall? Along Eastern Avenue? I don't know, I, I don't have any knowledge of that. I'm not...
So, did you take into consideration the fact that whether, did you examine whether the area is flood-prone when you were making these plans?
We did what we have to do to the property and the surrounding area, and we evaluate everything when we do our stormwater management analysis. And when you deal with a project like this, which is more of a redevelopment than taking a virgin piece of ground and adding a lot of impervious coverage to it, that's a different animal than what we have here. This, we review coverages, building coverages to pavement coverages, overall existing to proposed coverages, and general water quality requirements based on certain standards and guidelines, and we comply with everything we need to comply with, with respect to this application. We are reducing the impervious coverage on the property. We're not adding to it, we're reducing.
Thank you. Can you please explain to us, because again, I'm confused with the drawing, where, how many new additional parking spaces are there going to be? And if you can point to us exactly on the map, because with the large landscaping there, I have a hard time envisioning where the 1100 or 11, 1,0117, where they are going to be located. It seems like the trees, all right? Could you point us exactly where those parking spaces are going to be?
There's no new parking spaces. We're reducing the amount of parking on the property. There's a reduction in overall parking. So, the parking fields that you see there are generally there today. Or the parking field in front of Stop &amp; Shop in that retail building to the bottom of the sheet, to the south, they all exist. We're making modifications to the extent needed for the driveway accommodations, but other than that, they remain. The new, the parking field in front of the residential building and along JFK Boulevard, they all exist, but we're reducing the amount of parking within that area to incorporate the green space and the landscaping and the other amenities.
Okay, I think, I think I understand. And finally, I apologize for taking all this time with regards to sidewalks, and, and I believe Mr. Shepherd alluded to that. And again, at the risk of being told that this is the domain of the safety engineer, is there a safety engineer before I ask you this question, like a person, an engineer specifically?
This is a site plan question, ask it.
It's a question of public safety.
Ask it.
Because honestly, my question is, in this lovely four-story building, with, we don't know yet how many children will be there and how many young adults will be there? And I don't know, Mr. Turner, if you have children yourself? I raised two.
Ask the question, please.
Yes, I apologize. Where are we risking the parking lot becoming the playground for the teenagers and young children that will be residing there? And how are we protecting that, which goes back to my, the previous, Mr. Grippo's comments? And are the sidewalks, are we considering, did you consider in designing the sidewalks that people do not always follow a straight line when they walk? Instead, they go diagonally across to get to Stop &amp; Shop so they can buy their dinner in a hurry? And how are we going to protect the public safety and the residents' safety when there is, is there a playground included in this building? Where are the children supposed to go? So, if there is no playground, does that mean that the parking will be their playground?
Okay, I think there's a number of questions. Can we stop and let Mr. Turner answer them?
Yes, thank you.
There's at least three questions in there.
At least three questions, yes, I'm sorry.
So, I, I think one of the questions was in regards to pedestrian safety. And I think I've already testified on a number of occasions in regards to the improvements that are being made onsite relative to the sidewalks that are being added. There would be no need for somebody to walk diagonally across the parking lot. There are sidewalks and ramps that they can utilize, and if they decide not to use them, frankly, that's, that's on them. I mean, they're there, and that's where they're supposed to walk, along the sidewalks, and, and that's what they're there for, in crosswalks. So, they're provided now on this plan, which they currently are not on property. And so, in terms of the amenities, the architect will discuss in detail what amenity packages are being proposed on the property for the children and the residents that are located in that building. And in terms of, you know, children playing in parking lots, I, I can't answer that question. I mean, that's not something, I don't think anybody can answer. If they're going to play, look, a child, and I do have kids, I have three daughters, grown daughters, and, you know, it's, if they want to play somewhere, they're going to play somewhere. And I, you know, that's, all we can do is design to standards that are, we are obligated to design to, and we have to make engineering judgments in terms of safety on site plans and circulation and vehicular traffic versus pedestrian traffic. And I think I've already said it, but this plan, in my opinion, is a safe plan with respect to circulation and pedestrian movements.
Okay, for the sake of time, I will withdraw for the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask questions, or have you run out of time?
Pick up the, pick up the mic.
John Park, 510 Hamilton Street, Kareem Barbeque Group, please stop by when possible. Mr. Turner, thank you for being here today. I know it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough crowd. Just a quick question, it's a technical question, really. What is the width of that building right now?
The new building?
Yep. 335 feet? And how much space is between Kennedy Boulevard and the, the building currently?
As proposed?
As proposed, yes.
Yeah, it's... It's 130.7 feet setback from JFK Boulevard.
So, if we put it to the edge, it would be close to 500 feet, right?
If you put the building right up against the right-of-way of JFK Boulevard?
Yep.
Yes.
It'd be pretty close to 500 feet.
Wouldn't recommend it, but yes.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, we wouldn't recommend asking for four variances either. Yeah, I mean, but, you know, we wouldn't recommend asking for four variances either.
I don't think we can get the variance for putting the building on JFK Boulevard either.
I don't think you can get the variance for the height either. Good question. So, when you say there's 1,100 parking spots, are you counting electric parking as well?
Yes.
Are you counting them as two parking spots per?
No, we are calculating it based on the percentage allowed, based on the code.
Okay, so there are physically 1,100 parking spots in that area?
There are 1,100 parking spaces, yes.
Gotcha, Mr. Turner. And, Mr. Turner, how, how often do you come to this town? Are you aware of all the zoning codes in this town?
I, I'm familiar with the zoning codes as needed, project by project.
Okay, so, which areas typically allow a three-bedroom?
I, I don't know.
Okay, so, and generally, townships are against three-bedrooms. Do you know why?
That's not appropriate for me to ask.
Okay.
Answer.
Let me, let me answer that. There's no allowing a three-bedroom, there's no restriction against a three-bedroom. That the reason they're providing a three-bedroom is the, the three-bedrooms that, that, I think it's eight-three-bedroom?
Yes.
Those are only as part of the affordable housing that they're proposing, and they are, when there is affordable housing, they are required to provide a certain number of, of affordable units in the form of three-bedroom. That's, so that's, that's why, that's the eight units.
Okay, and then gen, generally, what, okay, nevermind, withdrawn. Just for my reminder...
It's a percentage of the affordable units.
Understood. Can you just remind me what a D1 variance is?
It's a use variance.
It's, I mean, but what, what are you asking for a variance for?
Residential within a business district.
Gotcha. And then, what, what is a D4 variance? Just sorry, really quickly.
D4 is the FAR, the Floor Area Ratio variance.
And what about a D6 variance? That's height, right?
That's the height variance, correct.
Understood. And what, currently on Eastern Avenue within Franklin Township, what is the tallest building? Do you know?
I don't know.
Do, do, do currently buildings on Franklin Township allow four-story buildings?
The Harrison is 36 stories tall.
Oh, 36 stories tall, okay.
Something in that area.
So, if, so if, if you allowed the height, if the zoning board allowed this building to go, wouldn't Somerset Plaza also allow, be allowed to ask for a height variance? Wouldn't it be easier for them to do so?
I can't answer that question. Answer that question, I'm sorry.
Okay, no further questions.
Ed Caraway, 533 New Brunswick Road. Let me start by doing something unusual. Thank all of you for serving on the board. I sat where you sat for two terms. It is a thankless job, and I appreciate the time and effort required to perform it. Mr. Turner, you spoke about stormwater runoff, and I'm an engineer, chemical engineer. I read through all of the reports, and you're using cascade separators to remove TSS. Would you explain to the public what TSS is?
Well, it's a total suspended solids designation, and it's a treatment device that's used to separate those suspended solids from the, from, from stormwater. So, we put them in particular spots in this particular project. We only required to put them in two locations, which was a requirement by the DNR Canal Commission in terms of removal and reconstruction of certain areas of asphalt. We are obligated to do that when we do that type of construction within their district.
Are there any controls for spills of gas and oil?
When? During construction?
During and after cars leak oil.
It's, it's nothing more than what you'd see on any particular site. I mean, it's a, it's a standard site with a parking lot, with buildings, and, you know, it's, it's...
So, there's no, there's no...
There's no specific...
There's no requirement to do anything?
No.
The maintenance requirements for the separators are quarterly, every three months, or after a one-inch rain event. And of late, we've been having one-inch rain events twice in a week. So, the applicant is prepared to perform maintenance as many times as is necessary.
There is, there is and will be a stormwater operation and maintenance manual in place. It will be provided to the group responsible for maintenance, and that's their obligation.
Who will that be?
I don't know.
So, you don't know who's gonna do this? How will it...
No, it's too early in the, it's too early in the process to allow the specifics.
Will it be documented?
The O and M manual, the operation and maintenance manual, gets filed by deed.
Okay, and is that the results recorded and available to the public for review?
Once they're filed, yes.
Okay, so if you get three events in a week, you are telling me now that someone will perform maintenance three times in that week?
I'm telling you that that is what they are required to do, if that's...
I'm not asking what...
You're asking me to forecast what somebody is going to do. I'm telling you that is the requirement, whatever the requirement is in terms of regular maintenance and intervals during rainfall or after rainfall events, that is all documented in that manual, filed by deed, and the responsible party is responsible for doing that work.
Okay, so via the board, I asked that you find out from the township how they will monitor this, because it could be three times in a week, the way weather's been lately. You talked about trees. There were trees in the Kmart parking lot. I don't know if you ever knew that they were there. I can only say that in terms of caring for those trees, if it was Levin's responsibility, they did an awful job because they're all dead. You were now talking about trees of various different sizes. As a member of the board in the past, well, I did the resolution, so, we said that if a tree dies, it is replaced with a tree in kind, which means if you got a 15-foot tree and it dies, you don't put in a, a seedling. So, what I would ask that the board, if they grant this resolution, make sure that they can't get away with planting a seedling when the tree dies.
That's a good thought, thanks.
Well, we did it exactly for that reason, and their track record with trees is not very good. Kmart, in addition to being a retail store, had an automotive repair shop, shop. By my background, I've audited facilities in three continents, and I have yet to be in a place that never had a spill of something that shouldn't have been spilled. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say pretty much with certainty that oil was spilled at Kmart. And Kmart had a waste oil tank. I know they had above ground, I don't know if they had below ground. What's been done in terms of soil testing to make sure there's been no oil in the ground?
So, our, our office was not responsible for the preparation, but I, I believe there was a Phase 1 environmental study done. An environmental study needs to be done anyway for it to go from commercial to residential, because it has to be certified clean to residential standards. So, that, that's the work that either has been done, or will be done, or will continue to be done. The building can't be built without that area being cleaned to residential standards.
Does someone from Levin know whether or not this is, has been done, and if not, when it will be done and who will do it?
I, I don't know if they'll know offhand this evening, but I'm sure they can get the answer. But again, we, you know, the project can't move forward and get any type of building permits or more specifically certificate of occupancies without making sure and certify that, that area is clean.
Okay, so you would be, Levin would be required by law, if it is found that there is oil or other contaminants in the ground, to remediate it before they can do anything?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Delwan Zabowski, 1935 Old Amel Road. A lot of my questions were answered, but I have one very important question. What is the, what is the traffic pattern proposed to allow for shipping and receiving for the current retail space?
So, currently, all of the, I'm reverting back to Exhibit A1. You'll see the back of the Kmart building, and the back of the retail center, as well as the back of the Stop &amp; Shop. The rear driveways are all the service areas for those, those uses. In the proposed condition, the, the operations for loading and unloading for Stop &amp; Shop will occur, they can either continue around the perimeter of the site and get themselves back like they do now, and that will allow for services related to the multi-tenant building as well. So, the service areas are not changing relative to existing to proposed?
Okay, so, from my understanding, there's 130 feet from the proposed residential building to JFK Boulevard?
Correct.
And there's how many parking spaces in that line?
In which line? The line parallel with JFK Boulevard?
Yes.
But probably, I'm guessing, it's probably around 130 spaces, I would imagine, somewhere around there.
And so, you want an 18-wheeler to go through that?
No, no, and I, I just, let me clarify.
Okay, thank you.
There's a lot of things running in my head. So, what, what will happen is, there, the services, the service areas for the multipurpose building and the other large tenants generally are not serviced by tractor-trailer deliveries. They're smaller tenant uses, they're not large boxes. So, they're generally serviced by, by, for the most part, by UPS box-type trucks. So, they can wrap themselves around the front of the building and then come in to the easterly end of the driveway and then do their servicing, and then make the U-turn around the back, and then come back out the same way they came. Similar in fashion with Stop &amp; Shop. So, there would be really no need for them to come in, because we don't want them coming in through the front of the building. So, that's, that's, that's something we do not want them doing. So, all of their service will be done through the easterly side.
Okay, so, I know this is not your engineering, but if I were Levin, I, if that one box door is empty and crunch leaves, then that is, could be a site where an 18-wheeler can go if they open up the wall and make a very big retail space. So, I implore the planning board to really look at this facet. I don't believe that there is enough understanding of where the delivery and the drop-off for shipping and receiving will be for the retail space. I think that putting the proposed building where it is, is not allowing for access without the safety and concern of people who will be parking and, and living there. Some other questions that I have is, what is the current height of your proposed building that you're asking a variance for? I know it's for floors, but what is that height?
47 feet.
Okay, and what is the current allowable height for that location, that variance?
40 feet is permitted. Right, I, I'm sorry, I misspoke. 30 feet, I'm sorry. 30, 30 feet is permitted in the zone, and the building proposed is 47 feet high.
Okay, so, in theory, that the current Kmart building can definitely go a little higher to allow for better retail space that people are looking for. All right.
They said that already. They said that already.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm just going back to questions, I apologize.
Well, it loses its effect.
All right, and my last question is, I, I think you said that, but you talked really fast. How many parking spaces are proposed for the residential space? I think you said 387, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, that's the required number of parking spaces for the 200 units.
Okay.
So, and, and what I believe I said is that in that parking area around the residential space, there is around that number. There may be a little bit more, I just don't have that number detailed, so, but it's, it's at least 387.
Okay, so that's less than two cars per unit. And are you allowing for any visitor parking space?
Yeah, that, that number includes, when you look at parking, residential parking components, as well as residential design standards, are all governed by the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards. The Residential Site Improvement Standards have a table of parking requirements based on the type of residential development it is, and the number of bedrooms. And that's how we calculate the, the required number of parking spaces, and built into their number is visitor spaces.
Will there be restrictions on residential parking for commercial vehicles? Like, say, for instance, a tenant has a, a business, has a trailer, has a, you know, an electric, you know, vehicle? Like, like what is the, what is the allowable, what is the thought process for a commercial vehicles being allowed? I know that there are restrictions for commercial vehicles in residential areas, especially on the streets and so forth, and in different, in these different condo areas, and I would like to know from the, from the engineering perspective, what is, what's the thought process there?
Generally, when we design for residential development, we are assuming that vehicular traffic will be of the residence or their guests will be what parks there. Commercial trucks, we don't, you know, anticipate there being any commercial trucks. Landscape equipment, they wouldn't be permitted to park in this area. So, it won't be just your, your typical vehicular, you know, vehicles that are for the residents and/or visitors.
And what is, so with all the, the other retail space around there, and you constantly have construction workers coming and going, how are you gonna know which one are the residents and they're not allowed to have it versus the people that are just parking to actually go into Stop &amp; Shop or into the other retail spaces?
Well, I think it's, it's by a product of the way the, the residential parking field is broken apart from the other parking fields for Stop &amp; Shop and the retail. Somebody going to shop at Stop &amp; Shop, I would not suspect want to park in front of the residential building, because it's, you know, there's, you know, it's longer to walk. So, they would park in the front. There's ample parking in front of the supermarket, as well as those other retail components, for people that want to go to those spaces, that's the parking field they'll use.
Is there, is there currently an ordinance for overnight parking in this, in this retail space?
I, I don't know, I'm sorry.
I see there's other people that want to talk, but I do have some more questions, so I do hope that this gentleman does come back. Thank you.
You're with Menlo Engineering, right?
Yes.
And they performed the, they prepared the environmental assessment report, the 11-page report, correct?
Correct.
Are you the person to answer those questions?
What is your question?
I have many questions.
I can answer general questions?
I don't have general questions.
Okay, then, you can ask, and I will tell you yes or no.
Well, you're gonna, are you gonna have somebody else that will be, will be good enough to answer those questions? That's, that's ready to answer those questions?
Well, answer, ask the question, and I'll, I'll see if I can answer...
I have a whole list of questions.
Okay.
So, are you gonna have somebody else?
No, the, we are not anticipated to have anybody else here. The environmental impact report was submitted and reviewed by the various committees in, in the town, and we've agreed to address any of those comments that we can.
Excellent. So, Mr. Chairman, I have many, many questions, and I know that it's 11:20. Is this gentleman gonna be back so that we can ask these questions? I know other people want to ask questions. My questions are gonna take with, my questions will take about 15 minutes. I have five different groups of questions, and with his answers, who knows how long it could be. You know, so, is he coming back, or what?
I, I will be back.
You will?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I think I have one other question. Okay. I think I have one other question. You also mentioned, you talked about public safety. Seemed like you were pretty well-versed on that. Are you the person to be talking about public safety, pedestrian safety, or is that something that is with the traffic people?
It depends on what you're asking about.
I'm asking about pedestrian safety and traffic safety and things like that.
To the extent that I can testify to that, I think I did, providing the pedestrian sidewalks, the updated striping signage, the crosswalks, the ADA ramps, providing the pedestrian crosswalk, interconnecting the different uses on the property that don't currently exist there today.
So there's a whole big, big traffic study? So I don't have to, I don't have to ask the question to the traffic person?
Not to me. That would be the traffic engineer, who will be here to testify.
Okay, but you're saying that you can, so I don't know if I'm supposed to ask you then, or should I ask them all those questions?
You should hold them for the traffic engineer. My testimony is in regards to the site planning and how we laid out the driveways, the intersections, and the sidewalks on the site.
Okay. All right, good. So we'll see you back whenever we see you back.
Thank you.
I'll have a lot of questions for you.
Okay. That's fine.
Hi, I'm Adrian Stavropoulos, 30 Foxwood Drive. I don't know if you can answer this question, but why four levels? Why four stories?
I can't answer that question. I engineer what I'm told to engineer, and that's what we do.
There are so many accommodations here, and I couldn't, I don't understand why we can't accommodate a variety of businesses in one building, like a mall. I just don't understand that. But you do talk to safety, right?
Correct, yes.
So you talked about sidewalks. When I think about all of that open area in front of the apartment complex, I don't understand why there's that need. We've talked about sidewalks for people to walk, and I guess little kids as well. Bicycles, I'm thinking. Kids like to rollerblade. They like to skateboard. What do you have in place for that? Are there fences? Like, what are your plans for safety of little kids? I know you say that you're only here for residential, but right now, this is a, I'm sorry, for residential. Right now, this is a business area. So I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I think I understand the question, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but the only thing we can do from a civil engineering point of view is make sure we provide-
Sorry, I get it.
Right, and also separation from the parking lots and the sidewalks. And what I mean by that is providing curbs and some protection in that regard. The sidewalks wrap around the building so that theoretically, somebody can use that sidewalk as a walking path or for riding a bicycle of that sort. You know, it's a mixed-use property.
And have you been there? Because it's really kind of tight as it is, so adding all those extra things will make it tighter?
Well, they're already there. I mean, we've already incorporated all those sidewalks-
You talked about adding more sidewalks?
No, not in this specific, no, not in this specific location, just in one particular area that was mentioned up by the bank.
I get it. I'll be back with more questions. I want to thank everyone on the board. I know this has been tough for you, but I appreciate that we are able to speak, and I'm hoping that you're really taking to heart our feelings and that this isn't just, you know, you're listening and you've already made up your mind. I really hope that you keep an open mind. I would greatly appreciate that.
Good evening. It's George Klepp from 5 Larson Road in Somerset here. I have just a couple of questions, primarily dealing with the site-
I need to get closer to the mic.
How's that?
Bring the mic closer to you.
How's that? Okay, I have a couple of questions with the site planning. And you alluded that you were taking care of the various subsurface utilities, sewer and water. And, you know, we're talking about the conditions, we have conditions now that would be suitable for the development of this, you know, 200-unit apartment house. Now, let's assume that we're going to have, just roughly speaking, maybe 250 gallons per day, per unit. That's a fair assumption, I believe. So we're talking about a lot of water per day. Now, the Kmart did not generate that much septic or sewage effluent. How are we going to guarantee that this stuff can get off of the site, not overwhelm the system that's, you know, generally overwhelmed to begin with? And that's just in the sanitary waste. Then there's the water. The subsurface, or I should say, the surface runoff is another issue. You talk about you're moving the TSS and dealing with the various things that'll roll off the site, and you're thinking about it. A one-inch storm would generate roughly, on this 27-acre site, roughly 3/4 of a million gallons of water. Are your systems going to be able to handle that? I mean, and looking at the data that was available, I have no feeling for that, except that we're going to comply with the rules and regulations. I'd like to know how you're going to comply with them.
Well, we comply with them by virtue of what I had explained earlier. There's a combination of a reduction in impervious coverage on the property, which net reduces the flow rate from the site, and we're also providing the water quality structures that are required. I have to design to a standard. I have to design to what I am obligated to design to by municipal standards, by New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards, and by the NJDEP and the DNR Canal Commission. And we've analyzed this site for stormwater management, and we've identified that we are compliant with all of those requirements. So, and that's our obligation. That is what we have to do.
All right, you've brought up the fact a couple of times, you've reduced the impervious cover in the site. The site's underlaid by Kleinsville Silty Loom. That's essentially impermeable itself. We've got a deposit there that has maybe a permeability of 10 to the minus 4 centimeters per second. It ain't going to go through it. So you could probably take all of the asphalt off of that property, and you'll get the same amount of runoff.
Well, we're not introducing water back into the ground. It's going, it's being collected and then ran through stormwater piping.
Well, if we had, in the past few years, you know, rainfall, you know, one-inch storm is three inches and change. That's a lot of water. I mean, you're not talking about detention basins or retention basins. You're talking about these, you know, relatively small TSS separators.
Do we have a question there?
Yep, you're getting into having a conversation rather than asking a question.
I'm asking if his system is going to be able to handle the flow of water.
He's asked that already. He said yes.
I don't believe it is.
Well, then-
But he hasn't told us how much water he's willing to accommodate.
I can testify to you that the system on-site has been reviewed, analyzed, submitted to all the professionals required to review it, and all outside agencies, and they've all agreed to this point right now in time that we are compliant.
All right, well, if we're compliant and everything's going to run hunky-dory, we're not going to have any problems. I guess we just have to say, we'll build it and see what happens, but I would not want to be around to watch what happens. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Turner, I think in the middle of that, he also asked about the water, public water, and the sanitary sewer, can you answer that?
Sure, so, yes, the sewer is required to get an approval from Franklin Township Sewers Authority. We will make that application, and they will confirm that they have adequate capacity for the site. We have no reason to believe that they do not. And then the water will be subject to a master permit that is applied for, by the municipality. It's a master permit to Franklin Township, and once that's done, the required water demand for this property will be included within that master permit.
Okay, at this point, we close the questioning session and move on. Find a new date for another hearing. Don't leave until you know what the next meeting date is, because it's not going to be, it's not going to be noticed to people, or it'll be on the website for the township. But this is the best place to get it.
Okay, so the hearing for Levin Properties, ZBA 240001, is going to be carried until May 2nd at 7:30 PM here at this location at 475 Demont Lane at 7:30 PM.
May 2nd, same time, same place.
Yep.
Any other housekeeping comments or questions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All favor. All right, and thank you, Board, for your attentiveness.